Budget Ways to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Today is Thursday, sixteenth of May. Time is 10:01. This is the Greene County Budget Committee, day four. Do we have any public speaking requests? I didn't see any at my station. Just checking. Okay. And do we have somebody from the Compensation Committee here?
Excuse me, before we start, just the whole housekeeping. I know yesterday there was some discussion on the difference in the contract for the software program. I think what I'd heard was 170 for total cost and you folks had heard another 150. And I'm not sure if we clarified that, but the second part of that would be with the CAFSA, which is the County Assessment Function Funding Assistance, which I understand is an annual grant. And does that, would that affect the software purchase? How much would we get towards that per dollar overall?
So what I'd like to do is actually wait on that.
Yeah, it can be a lighter date.
I asked Mr. Cohen to come and talk to him this morning and told him there was some confusion, certainly on my part and amongst the members. So Mr. Cohen is here, but I want to do our compensation review first because we'll get this gentleman to provide his report and then we'll move into cleaning up those matters from yesterday. That work for you, Rich?
Yeah, it works perfect. I just want to make sure we get into it.
Yes, sir. I have a list. Raleigh, is that correct?
Yes.
If you would, sir, please take the microphones and...
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Bruce Raleigh and I reside in Brookings. And I'm here today representing the Currie Compensation Board that consisted of myself, Mr. Kevin McHugh, and Ms. Marcela Watermans. And I'm here to represent the Board in giving our report from our work that we did when we met on April 22nd of this year to review the compensation of the elected officials. And so I prefer to be a little bit informal, so feel free as I kind of go through this. Hopefully you've received a copy of the report. It's a single page. It looks like this. And I'll just kind of step through it. And like I said, feel free to interrupt me at any point in time if you have any questions or that type of, or want to discuss anything in any depth. And I will proceed with our recommendations. And as has been pointed out, our job as the committee is just to give recommendations to the Budget Committee. And ultimately, it's within the purview of the Budget Committee to make any changes. As a committee, we don't have the authority to do that. Only the Budget Committee does. So these are our recommendations. We had a total of five elected officials that we reviewed: the sheriff, the county assessor, the county clerk, the county treasurer, and then the county commissioners. So I'll start first with the sheriff. And you can see in the chart here. And I might add, this is my second year serving on the committee. And it seemed like we had less information provided to us. So it would be nice to get a little bit more breadth of information and consistent information. One of the things that we had, one of the counties that was like ours, was Crook County. And the information we had for each of the positions was a range of salaries that started, and there was quite a range in the salary, you know, a difference of $20,000 to $30,000 type thing. For example, for sheriff, the low end was 92,622. The high end was 124.5. And so we had to kind of make sense out of that because it didn't give us a easy comparison with that range. And so we had to kind of guess and mesh that in that. So just that comment for future Compensation Committee Review Sessions to have more definitive, a little bit more information also about the size of the counties and the duties of the elected officials in those counties, because it's hard without that information to compare apples to apples. You know, because like, for instance, talking about the sheriff, I believe our sheriff here has several additional duties that may be a sheriff in another county, even though comparable in size, may not have those duties. And so in order to fairly assess the compensation, that information will be extremely helpful to in the future. But we did the best we could with the information that we had. And so, without any further ado, I'll go ahead and talk about the sheriff's salary. And so this peer average was from the chart we were given. And we picked out a subset of about five like counties and then tried to come up with a reasonable comparable figure in those counties. And that's what the peer average is. And so we found the peer average for sheriff and other like counties to be about $92,390. Our current sheriff's salary is $88,480. And we felt, and like I said, I served last year, and my recollection is, last year, the sheriff was not granted any kind of increase in salary. And this year, we are recommending that the sheriff's salary go up to $90,980, which represents a $2,500 increase. Moving next to the county assessor, the peer average salary that we found was about $76,120. The current salary of the assessor is $64,746. And we are recommending that that be increased to $65,746, which is an increase of $1,000. The county clerk, the average, we found to be $74,815. The current salary for our clerk is $64,098. And we are recommending that that be increased to $65,073, a $975 increase. The county treasurer, the average there was $75,180. Our current treasurer is making $63,524. And we're recommending that that be increased to $64,484 or a $960 increase. Then as far as county commissioners, the peer average that we found out there was $74,775. And the current salary that we were given is $66,469. And our recommendation was to keep it at that level of $66,469. And just a couple of things, in my recollection and looking at last year's compensation report for the commissioners, just a couple of comments and notes, there appears to be some sort of disparity. Because if you look back at last year's Compensation Committee report, as far as commissioner's salary, it was recommended at $68,600. And that was supposed to, again, not have any kind of increase. And so I'm not sure why, you know, last year, we were given the figure of $68,600 for commissioner's salary. And this year, we were given $66,469. So there seems to be a disparity. Not sure which is the actual accurate figure. But basically, what it comes down to is, the recommendation is to not change that figure. And in fact, in the past, it's noted that the commissioners have voluntarily taken a reduction in that last year because there was a county administrator in place. And we're encouraging something similar to happen as well, given the fact that a county manager was hired and to help with some of the administrative duties and that type of thing, and do similar things to what the county administrator had been doing before that change was taken place. So obviously, the setting of salary for the commissioners is in the camp of the commissioners, as we noted last year. And so, but our recommendation was that you consider taking a reduced amount over whichever figure is the correct one as far as the established salary for commissioner to help offset the cost of the county manager, similar to what was done to offset the cost of a county administrator. So that is my report. Any questions for me?
I have no questions. Anybody else have questions for Bruce?
Did you look at things such as the insurance contributions or any of that?
Again, the information that we were given, and I've got a copy here if you'd like to take a look at it. It was basically a sheet like this. And it was lacking in a lot of information. There was information as far as benefit information for elected officials, but it was simply, it was not parceled out. So the assumption we made was that whatever benefits were listed for the county here applied across the board to all of the elected positions. And we did look at that and take that into account the best that we could. But again, having the lack of the details as far as, you know, if, say, the sheriff got better benefits for whatever reason than maybe the assessor, this information didn't tell us that in the counties, even in our county, whether, you know, there was a difference between elected positions. So again, I know as we first met in the discussion we had, we were a little bit frustrated with the lack of detail in the information that we were provided to work and make the decision based on. But yeah, we did best that we could take benefit information into account.
Rich?
Yeah. I was just wondering, when you look at the peer average and then you look at what you recommend, for instance, let's say the sheriff, you say the peer average is $92,390, and you're recommending $2,500. Then you go down the line and see the assessor at 76. How do you come up with this figure of the increases? It seems kind of low to me if the peer, if the peer group over here is receiving this, and you're advocating $1,000 an increase or $2,500. How did you arrive at this?
The way that we arrived at it, and that's the other thing I forgot to mention, we do, as we put in the report here, the general feeling is that, you know, compared to their peers across the board, you know, our county elected officials seem to be underpaid. The way that we came away with this is we kind of looked at, one of the things that was on the chart that we had was an anticipated salary increase percentage. And so we took that percentage, kind of did an average. I'm trying to remember, it seemed like the average across the board went anywhere from 1% to 2% in the comparable counties. And so I believe we settled on about a 1.5% increase. And so what we did is we took the current salary of our elected official and applied roughly a 1.5% across the board.
I think, I think I would like to say appreciate every, but fourth, it just appears to me to be low. And not criticizing the board or anything. It just, general appearance doesn't match up with me. So, but thank you.
And I understand. And the reasoning there is, I think we were cognizant of the, you know, fiscal soundness of the county and the, you know, revenue struggles and that type of thing. And wanted to, you know, recognize by granting increases, but also wanted to make reasonable recommendations.
I understand that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If now is appropriate time, I'll be prepared to make a motion here in a little bit. But just a quick comment and gratitude to the Compensation Committee. We'll get a chance to properly thank you and Mr. McHugh and Ms. Waterman. I referenced the other day the experience of the elected officials we have here from Everdile, the sheriff, all the way down. And the short two and a half years I've been here, I have worked hard to build a relationship with each and every one of them. They have been absolute go-to people. And that includes former county commissioners, at least a half a dozen, that still care very much about this county and the direction. So if the committee is okay, I'd like to make a motion to accept, if now, again, if now is the time, so I'd be your approval, Mr. Chair. If now's the time to make that approval to the committee that the commissioners can vote and potentially approve later on, I'd like to accept the Compensation Committees.
I just want to make sure there's no other questions.
Excuse me.
Before we move to that, but certainly I think we're close.
Okay.
Any other questions for Bruce?
Do you accept the question from Peter Huddle?
I don't see why not.
You have to...
You have to come up to the mic.
Identify.
Let me draw ID.
Mr. Raleigh, my question was, and I'm sorry I didn't have the opportunity to meet with the Salary Committee to discuss these when you met, but my question was, which of the five counties did you compare us to? And did you take it into consideration, at least for the assessor's position? I was aware that this was the list of counties that you got. But I don't know if you took into consideration that there's only four of these counties where the assessor is also the tax collector. And generally, when that occurs, those assessors are getting paid a little bit more.
Basically, to answer your question, we, before we started, went, and there were some counties that, population-wise, they were quite a bit different on our chart here. For instance, Currie County is about 22,600 for county population. One of the counties here was Lake County, population of 8,000. And so we kind of threw them out. It's like, so to answer the question, the four main ones that we zeroed in on were Mollier, Union, Crook, and Jefferson. And Mollier, population 31,007 roughly. I'm trying to read my writing here. Union County, if I remember right, is about 26,000. Crook County, 21,500. And Jefferson County, 22,700. So population-wise, and then the rest of them, you know, like I said, Lake County was 8,000, Baker County, 16,500, Morrow County, 11,700. And Waller County was 7,000. We didn't fill those that necessarily were relevant. And to answer your other question as far as, that's what I talked about in the beginning, the lack of information about duties, because we are not well-versed, and certainly in other counties, not well-versed as far as, you know, what are the duties of the assessor there? And what are the duties of our assessor here? And how do they compare? You know, as I pointed out with the sheriff, the sheriff has a big duty here in our county with search and rescue efforts that may not be the same case in other counties that may be even like population. So that's part of the frustration, and it's probably reflected in the conservative recommendations here. And I would love to see a lot more detailed information. And, you know, like I said, this is my second year on the committee. And in the two years, I've learned a lot, and not nearly as much as I've learned in the six years on the school board in Brookings. But I would be open to, for preparation for next year, working with somebody at the county prior to the time that we meet to say, here's the information we really need to do a proper job. We felt kind of handicapped with the information that we got. But, you know, realizing that there were, you know, deadlines and things, you know, you have to adopt the budget and it's a big process. Didn't want to say, okay, put on the brakes, get us the information that we need and that type of thing. But I think in preparation for next year, it would be greatly appreciated if we could get more detailed information. I mean, we're seriously looking at what, you know, five positions that we're evaluating here, to be able to get definitive comparative salaries and comparative responsibilities, and a little bit more details on the benefit information for the elected officials, so that we can make a better informed decision. Because there is that difference in responsibilities. And, you know, if our elected official here has additional responsibilities compared to somebody else in another county, that should be recognized in the form of compensation.
Thank you, Bruce.
One quick question, just off the top of your head. Do you remember what you recommended last year?
Actually, I have the report of last year with me. So I can tell you exactly what was recommended last year.
Just percentage-wise?
Actually, I do not have a percentage. It wasn't broken down that way.
Okay.
But basically, the recommendations that were put forth last year were even more conservative. Let's see. Commissioner, no increase was recommended. Sheriff, no increase was recommended. And I apologize. The assessor was increased to 69,650. I don't have on the report noted what the previous salary was, so I don't know what an increase it was. But it seemed like in my mind, it was right around, again, the $1,000 range. It was a minimal increase. Clerk was recommended to increase to 66,400. And the treasurer was recommended to increase to 66,400. And so, yeah, that's what last year's committee recommended. And don't recall what percentage that was, but...
Thank you.
Mr. Huddle?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So earlier at the beginning of the meeting, I handed out to the three lay members of the Budget Committee the statutes on the salary or the Compensation Board's duties. They make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. However, the Budget Committee, if there is going to be a raise in the salaries of any elected officials, the Board of Commissioners cannot make that raise without a recommendation to do so from the Budget Committee. So any motion from the Budget Committee here would be if the Compensation Board is recommending a raise in the salaries of elected officials, it would just be a motion to recommend or to approve a raise of the salaries of elected officials for when the Board of Commissioners gets to that decision-making during their part of the process.
Thank you, Mr. Huddle. Any further questions for Bruce? Yes? You have to come up to the microphone, please.
Sheriff Ford, I want to thank you for all you guys' work. And when it came time to do the, for you guys to do your work, we, I didn't know anything about when you guys were meeting. And because every year, I provide a sheriff's survey, which gives all that information you're looking for. And I never was contacted by the Compensation Board to discuss that. So there was a disconnect there somewhere. I just want to put it on record, my compensation is without PERS. So that money, if I was to take the money out that I'm getting for PERS, put it back in my salary, my salary would only be about $78,000. So the county's not paying for any of my PERS. So that's, we just put it into my salary. So there is no raise. There was no cost to the county for doing that. And I do know that last year, there was, I think, three, three like officials that were given a $2,000 raise. Commissioners weren't, and I wasn't. It wasn't directed towards me. And I thought that was kind of odd that you would pick out some of the commissioners or elected officials and not the others. The other issue is, you know, and the commissioners are facing the same thing, we're capped at an insurance rate of $1,000 when the union people are getting about 13,250, which, again, starts working on that compression issue that we've been trying to fix. So my recommendation is that when we look at giving a raise or an increase to some people's salary, that goes across the board all the way up, and not just stop at the non-representative, but it stops at the elected officials after they get compensated the same. It just stops that compression issue. Otherwise, we're going to continue fighting, fighting that.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any, Louise, you had your hand up earlier?
Yes, I'd actually, my question is for the assessor. Yesterday, I believe that the assessor spoke about the deputy assessor in his office having a salary that was more than his salary. He's going back to get some information. So I'd like, I'd like to know what that difference is and, and if this recommendation corrects that or it just is still below.
Wait a minute.
Say again?
Jim Colen, County Assessor.
Mr. Pass, Commissioner Pass, if you have something.
No, it's good. I'm fine.
Well, I have a question. Why would this affect? Why shouldn't the question come from us instead? Louise, am I wrong? Or, I mean, this is...
Are you saying I don't have the right to ask the question?
No, I'm just curious. Are you going to be part of the decision?
No, but is this information that'll help your decision?
Well, I think that we should have probably have it, but I don't know.
Okay.
I'm just asking.
I don't make...
I don't understand the process and I just want to know. I didn't say you didn't have the right.
Sure.
But I'm just curious just to...
I just wanted to get you more information to help in your decision.
Okay. Thank you. That wasn't clear to me, and I was wondering where we're going with it.
So just as a point of order, we are 30 minutes into this discussion. And we need to start moving to wrap this up fairly soon. So let's please answer this last question and keep it as brief as we can.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure. Currently, in this year's budget, with the way things are, you know, this is without regards to any other increases you might do to nonrepresented employees. The assessor is about $4,000 a year in salary and benefits package behind the deputy assessor. My support.
Okay.
That's about as quick as I can make that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
So Bruce, thank you for your report. We're going to have to close this part of the session because otherwise, this is going to drag out for a couple of days. And we still have two portions to do.
Yeah, just one party comment. I think all of the questions that have been brought up and the discussions that have been brought up, I think, could be avoided if we had better information and were better prepared to go through the process as a Compensation Board.
Sir, next year, let me be your liaison. Contact me. I will get you the information you request. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you. And I apologize for calling you by your last name, Bruce Raleigh. It's in.
That's okay. I answered to many things.
Please thank the other members for their service and their support.
Thank you, sir.
So as I, for a process point, Mr. Huddle, perhaps you could help me here. Do we have two orders of business? One would be accepting the report from the Compensation Committee, and then the second would be making a recommendation.
So again, the Compensation Committee technically makes their recommendations to the Board of Commissioners. You actually have two orders of business. This is a separate business on a recommendation of, to allow the Board of Commissioners, if they want, to raise the fees or the salaries of elected officials. The Board of Commissioners sets the salaries of elected officials, but they cannot raise them unless the Budget Committee approves. So in addition to your duties of reviewing the budget and approving the budget, you would have a separate motion aside from that. So I think you maybe review a budget, you maybe recommend a permanent tax rate, and then this would be a... then this would be a third one to authorize the Board of Commissioners to raise the salaries of elected officials per the recommendations from the, from the Compensation Board.
Yes, sir.
Can we deviate from the recommendations from the Compensation Board if the committee recommends the raise?
Yes, so the, the, the recommendations of the Compensation Board are just that, just recommendations. The ultimate decision will be the Board of Commissioners, but the Board of Commissioners cannot make a raise above that approved by the Budget Committee, which you are here. So, if the Budget Committee here has an idea amongst themselves of the top limits that they want to authorize the Board of Commissioners to go to when they consider compensation of elected officials, that's what the Budget Committee should be doing, is separating it, creating a ceiling?
Got you.
That the Board of Commissioners don't go above. You don't have to accept the recommendations of the Compensation Committee, that's just information for you to make your decision. Ultimately, the Board of Commissioners will consider, so you're going to get to do your presentation again to the Board of Commissioners when they come time, so that's, this is technically the Budget Committee here.
So, do we?
I understand that.
Okay.
From last year, I actually did the presentation last year, so I'm familiar with the process.
Very good, all right.
So, do we need, do we need to make a motion to accept the Compensation Board report?
I would, I, no, you don't. What you need to do, in my opinion, is authorize top-level salaries for any elected official, and you may want to, there's five of them, I think, well, there's three Commissioners and then three or four others. I think what you might do is say, do we have a top-range salary for the assessor? Do we have a top-range salary for the Treasurer? Do we have a top-range salary for the clerk, sheriff, and then Board of Commissioners? And, and then just discuss each one of those amongst yourselves, so that...
I'd like to make a recommendation before we go any further, just to move the process along, and then we can certainly discuss it. My recommendation would be as follows. I am recommending a two percent cost-of-living increase for all elected officials across the board, and increasing their one thousand dollars in healthcare to twelve hundred dollars in coverage and healthcare, and that's my recommendation, it's certainly up for any discussion amongst all the committee members.
I'll second that.
I know, it's just a recommendation. Verifying and seconding, so...
What was the, what was the amount on the...
Two, two percent COLA? Two percent cost-of-living adjustment across the board for all elected officials, and raising healthcare coverage from one thousand to twelve, well, not the coverage, but the co-pay, from a thousand to twelve hundred dollars.
The contribution.
I'll second that, but I would like to take, my opinion would be to take the Commissioners out of the COLA raise. I think our, for my vote, it would be not to give the Commissioners a salary raise. As far as the insurance goes, that's a separate issue for me, so...
So, you want to take them one at a time, more or less?
I would like to take them one at a time, if we could.
Question, this recommendation just made at two percent, if I don't agree with that, I mean, is that, were we stuck with that?
No.
Because I, I think two percent...
No, 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 that's what we're talking, this is a discussion, right?
Just discussion, because...
And then we can vote, let's say that becomes, you know, a motion and it's seconded, then we have a vote on this, and the vote carries.
Okay.
So, what would your recommendation be?
I'm, I'm, you know, we're talking compression and comparison to the negotiations, and I'm not sure on the health insurance, I'm totally knowledgeable, but I think two percent, in my opinion, is low, just my personal opinion, and I don't know how that figures in if you figure in health and the overall percentage package. So, if you have health, you have the two percent, are you including that? I'm sorry.
That's okay, I, I think, as Commissioner Pash said, breaking them down into their component pieces would, would help the discussion. I don't know how to analyze how it makes the total percentage increase in the package, but...
I just want to get locked in at that two percent, for me, so if, you know, if it's a vote, then I guess it's a vote.
Well, it's a deliberation, it's a motion and deliberation, and then a vote, so I think you're deliberating now and giving your reasons why, what, you know, you might want to expound on your feelings on the two percent, why it's not good enough, or what it should be, perhaps.
Now?
Sure, because it's deliberation on...
Sure, I don't, we're talking compression issues, and we're talking salaries, people that haven't had raises, elected officials, and I agree with the Commissioner, if they want to exclude themselves from raises or whatever, that certainly is, is a different ballpark, so, yeah, I think it's a low figure. Do I have a figure that I, that I would say? I'm, I'm saying at least four or five percent is my feelings.
So, and by the way, if I could just remind the Budget Committee what you're doing, you're not actually granting any raises or granting any increase, you're authorizing the Board of what they can't go beyond?
I realize that, and that's why I don't want to be locked in at the two percent.
All right.
Just for general information, I've kind of ran some numbers during your presentation, and if we were to go just a straight three percent across the board for all elected officials other than myself, you're looking at basically forty dollars a week per, per elected official, if you break it down that way, so this is not a huge sum of money you're talking about, and that would be a three percent raise, not addressing yet the insurance on that.
Anybody else have discussion on this?
I'm with Mr. Pash, in the interest of pay equity, it's hard for me to justify, three other elected officials have been here a lot longer than me, and I actually have more money than them, could we add to that, simply bring the assessor, clerk, and treasurer up to the same level of pay as the Commissioners? And what would that do to our budget?
Well, there's a whole lot of other machinations we need to get to before we...
I know.
Because that's, you know, a small impact, and I, I think there's a lot of...
That was on the assumption that, that we could handle that.
If we're looking at a three percent raise for the assessor, clerk, treasurer, and sheriff, and I'm going to leave the sheriff out of this, honestly, because I didn't do the percentage raise, but you're looking at basically between nineteen-oh-five and nineteen-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars per, per annum on that, so that would get, that would get them very close, within about a thousand dollars for the most part, to the Commissioner's salary, so you may be looking at another half a percent or a percent, up to four percent on that, so...
Would that be with the health?
That's without healthcare, and that's, that's something completely different. That's what we're talking about just right now, percentage of raise, and then the insurance, the insurance would be something...
You're not taking health out, though, right?
No, no, we're not taking...
But the healthcare cost is twenty-four-hundred a year per person, that two hundred dollars.
Yes.
And that's why, you know, I made the recommendation I did, I don't like recommending lower amounts, I want to keep things fairly even, but I think addressing the health issue and getting that more in line with where everybody else is at, sort of levels that playing field a little bit, and then if we take your figure with the twenty-four-hundred, we're at a pretty reasonable increase.
And just so I understand this process, again, Counselor, we're making a recommendation, a ceiling, if you will, that the Commissioners will vote on and determine what that, what that will be.
Right, per those statutes, if the, the Board of Commissioners cannot raise the salaries of any elected officials without approval of the Budget Committee, so if you set a ceiling, as long as the Board of Commissioners stays anywhere within that ceiling, I would say they followed that statute.
Okay, then I would recommend four percent, to create that ceiling at four percent with the other recommendation.
The two hundred increase in the health insurance.
Correct.
Okay, so, is that a friendly amendment that would be accepted by the second, or is that even accepted by the maker of the motion? I mean, it's kind of interesting, that would, the, we have a, we're getting into some real goofy parliamentary procedures here, but essentially, we had a motion, it got kind of split in two, we went percentage first.
We withdraw your motion, and then have a new motion, would that be all right?
Well, I think we're still in discussion phase, that's the problem.
You are.
I'm not comfortable at four percent, because I think when we include the healthcare cost, that's a significant increase. We have a lot of budgeting left to do, we haven't even gotten to approving a single budget yet, and I just want to be conscientious in our approach. I agree totally, our elected officials are underpaid, but we can't fix everything in one year, we'll be bankrupt, there would be no money left, and we have to, we have to process these things slowly, let's try to get everybody caught up. I would be comfortable at a three percent, and the healthcare, I think the healthcare is important to create that level playing field, if you will, and that's a significant difference, that's twenty-four-hundred dollars less a year that each elected official is going to pay towards their own healthcare. I think that's a, it's a pretty significant contribution, and so I would be comfortable going up to three percent, recognizing that other twenty-four-hundred dollar a year cost, or actually, decrease in cost.
I agree with that.
I'm still at four percent.
Well, why don't we have a motion and a vote on the three percent?
I hear three and a half.
Well, I'll give you the other three and a quarter. The nice thing about the three percent is it keeps us in line with...
Everybody else.
With everyone else in the county.
Okay.
We're not getting, elected officials are not getting ahead of everyone else in the county.
Well, from what I've seen, they're not going to get ahead, they're, they're behind, and they've been behind for several years, but anyway, I'm, I'm still stuck on the four percent, but that's what we can vote on, so...
It, it'll, it may not, you don't have, it doesn't have to be unanimous vote, it just, the motion would just have to pass by a majority.
Right.
So, really, that's kind of, and then it would be nice to know exactly what you're voting on, did we go back and combine them back into percentage and healthcare?
Do you want to do that?
And you also have a hand behind you, I don't know if you're still willing to take comments?
Not right at this time, we're processing, and I think...
Fair enough.
Otherwise, we're, you know, it's, we're forty-five minutes into the day, and I'm already freaked out, because we got a lot to do.
I, I agree with you.
So, let me amend my initial motion with the following. A three percent increase across the board for all elected officials, if the Commissioners choose not to take that, that's entirely up to them, this is just a ceiling point, and increasing a thousand dollars in healthcare contribution to twelve hundred dollars per month, so a two hundred dollar a month increase. That is my recommendation and motion.
And I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Well, you might, you might need to do a, a voice vote, since there seemed like there was some, JJ, do you want to go roll call vote on this?
Okay. Committee member voice.
Aye.
Committee member Alcar, Vice Chair Alcar.
I'm all about negotiation, so I say yes.
Was that a yes or no?
Yes, that's a yes.
Committee member Gold.
Yes.
Committee member Pash.
Yes.
Committee member Gold.
No.
And Chair Duque.
Yes.
Motion carried five to one.
Yes, Louise.
Is that what you want me to put in the budget?
The Commissioners still have to meet and make a decision, is that correct, Mr. Huddle?
Yes.
Right, and...
But that doesn't...
So, I think, yes, the answer is, Louise, they're asking to budget this amount, and then the Commissioners, but the Commissioners would ultimately approve the budget, Louise, so it's really a question for you, what will help you the most presented in the budget or not.
Well, see, my, this is, this is where, where I am on, on putting this into the budget, and I do want to put it in the budget, because I believe that, basically, this is going to be approved by the Board, but this affects a lot of admin costs, which affects almost every single department in this county.
Yes.
So, the calculations for me to be able to give you the numbers to approve the budget will take, after we review today, it will take me some time, so it'd be probably Friday afternoon before we could meet to approve the budget, if that's, if you understand that's what would happen.
I, as I was going through and tabbing my book a little bit last night, I realized there was no way that we are going to conclude all of this today.
Okay, good.
So, yes, I think as we get through the day, we'll be in a better position to pick a time that we'll do the final vote.
Okay, so that, although the Commissioners did not really, I mean, individually said that they didn't want to increase theirs in any way, they, the Budget Committee does want me to put it for everybody.
I would ask that you just put it all in, and then the Commissioners can make a decision, and if they like not to do that, then that's just going to be lost cost for the county.
Okay, all right, just making it clear.
Yes, sir.
I, I agree with you about moving things along, but I don't want to move it so fast that there's something we're voting on we don't totally understand, and I realize what you're saying about the rest of the budget, but my experience with budgets, and I may be wrong, is that often some people put in more than they want, you know, hoping to get, or more than they want, and then hoping they get it, so, yeah, I think there might be some discussions on the budget, but I don't want to be my feet to the fire to put this thing through just for the sake of time, so, and I understand where you're coming from, because you probably sacrificed more than Brad and I.
We have, we have a lot to do, and our goal is to get through this this week, and I don't think that it's unsurmountable. Certainly, I'm not trying to rush through the budget, and if it feels that way, please let me know, and I'll try to slow that down.
I will.
Got some handouts?
I, I want to get to the assessor first, and then we'll get to SRS, and then we'll get to, getting to the budget.
Okay.
So, because I asked Mr. Cohen to come down, and I don't want him to spend an inordinate amount of time out of his office. Thank you, Jim.
Absolutely.
And so, we've asked the assessor to come back just to clarify for us what the cost would be, and, and what I would ask, Mr. Cohen, is if you could just identify the hosted cost. I think having our own server and doing all that, I, I don't think anybody's in support of that, including yourself, would that be correct?
That's correct.
So, we just want to focus on that, that way we won't get confused about any other potential costs.
Jim Cohen County Assessor, the hosted cost is one hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
That's in, done, up to speed, schooled, everything.
Translated, or...
That's transferring the...
That's the upfront cost to acquire that, that system.
Okay.
And the transfer of data is included in there?
That is the cost of the transfer of data.
Okay, and what's the annual cost after that?
The annual cost after that is in the range of, I think, ninety-two or ninety-seven thousand, actually, I can pull that up.
I thought you said it was, I'll let you pull it up.
Ninety-seven thousand, five hundred, annual maintenance cost.
I thought the other day when we spoke, you said it was sixty.
That is what we're paying now, and what we would be paying is about sixty-seven thousand, five hundred, if we purchased the system outright. So, so we're paying more in maintenance cost, but what I, what I mentioned the other day was, that means that our software provider is going to have the licenses for, for the software, we're going to be on their hardware, and they're going to have to be responsible for maintaining that, and whatever upgrades are required, they're going to be responsible for all the backups, we won't have to pay our IT department to do that, and we have the, the additional benefit of, if there's a disaster, there are going to be our disaster recovery.
They back up, you said, in two locations?
Yes, at least two.
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Cohen?
I do.
Go ahead, please, Jim.
Could you explain the CAFSA, and are we going to get anything back on our CAFSA grant for this purchase?
Actually, the CAFSA grant will pay approximately eighteen percent of this purchase, because the CAFSA grant, and, and you got the name right, County Assessment Function Funding Assistance Grant, pays counties, and, and I think this year it's approximately eighteen percent of our overall expenditure in assessment and taxation. That percentage changes slightly from year to year, I mean, back when it was first implemented, the CAFSA grant, it was paying closer to thirty-five to forty percent, but over the years, it, it's been declining, so...
Will that pay anything on the yearly maintenance next?
It will.
This, because this is a yearly...
It will pay the same percentage on the maintenance next year.
So, we have savings in those.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other, Louise, any other questions?
So, Jim, did I, I send you that worksheet revised with those numbers in it, with the purchase and the loan proceeds and everything in it? Did I send you a copy of that?
I don't know if you did, Louise, I, I don't rec, it's not...
Okay, because I kind of did the, the handout yesterday, that had a hundred and seventy loan proceeds, a hundred and seventy capital outlay, forty thousand dollars a year, assuming a four percent interest, five-year loan on the hundred and seventy thousand, so... So, so that's debt payment. So, did you budget for the increased $30,000 of maintenance cost for next year?
We won't actually have to pay that increase in maintenance costs this next year. It won't happen until the following year.
So, does, does that, I know that you put numbers in for your CAFSA grant. Does, does that change what you have, you know, from what you originally put in? Does this
It does.
Throw them into your CAFSA?
The original amount that I put in was the 352,000. I will be bringing an amended CAFSA grant application to the Board of Commissioners next Wednesday, your Commissioners.
I just was concerned about
To account for this.
I was just concerned about his CAFSA grant. And so I think that I have that handout that I did yesterday is correct for what we have to do then.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Cohen? Thank you for coming up today and clarifying that, Mr. Cohen.
Absolutely, it's important, like I, you know, really, this is a, a have-to-do item. I, I feel for Curry County.
We hear you.
Okay, thank you.
SRS is next with Louise.
That was actually from me.
Oh, sorry.
I, I was like, I don't have anything prepared, so.
Commissioner Gold, there's a lot going on here, sorry.
That's the only copy there, so. I went and got some more information after yesterday's meeting because there seemed to be a lot of confusion. So I wanted to get it in my, mind straight, and I thought it might help some of the rest of you.
Is this something that you want to talk about, Commissioner Gold, or should I read this?
Only if people are interested.
Okay.
If they're not, that's okay.
All right. I will pass this to the other committee members, and when we take a break, I'll read through this, and then I'll pass it on to them.
Okay, that's fine.
Louise, did you have some?
Some comment on SRS?
No, 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 did you have something else that you?
I have some things for today, handouts for today. First, I'm going to hand out the page 129 and page 130. I noticed when we were discussing the, this is actually a, the Kami Grant, yesterday, I think it was. I noticed that there was some, a problem with the page wherein a comment had been inserted, and it inserted lines, and it moved all of the budget down three lines. So this is taking those lines back out and putting the budget correctly against the lines. So this is a replacement page. Did you get one already, Julie? Okay. And then I have the change from yesterday, and it was the clerk, the clerk reduced their budget by $700. So this is the, the budget change from that. And then I did a kind of a sheet. I would have, if I had more time, I would have done a little bit more for you. But I was going to attach the changes that were already made to this handout, but I did not have enough time, so I referenced the handouts that I've already given you that these things took place on. So this is to help us go through the budget and show where we have approved or not approved or, or still holding on. So this is just a worksheet for us to work with just after, or the rest of the day, I guess. Thank you, Julie. There's, they get these. So the single page is just a, I mean, it completely just replaces this page that goes right into your book.
Mine's on two pages in my book, so.
Yeah, it's 129, 130.
Right.
Yeah, it's, she's printed it, so they would just replace that one sheet.
Well, no, on mine, it's two separate pages. So it's 128, 29, 130, and 31. I don't know why.
I don't know why either. You've got a crazy book. I'll have Jean look at it for you.
Yeah, so here's 29. 30, but two different pages.
Anything else, Louise?
No, that's what I had to prepare for today.
Thank you.
If you want to, I mean, quickly go over this
131.
Change from yesterday, basically, it's reducing $700 or in the clerk's recording budget. The line was travel mileage allowance. And what that does is it, to rebalance the general fund, I reduced the revenue by $700. So you had the handout of the non-departmental before. So this is an updated one, and the little box at the bottom includes that negative $700 adjustment to their proposed budget for the beginning fund balance.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, in the spirit of comfort and environment, let us all please take a 15-minute recess. It is currently 10:58, so we'll take a 17-minute recess. Let's all come back at 11:15, and we should be able to start going through the tabs.
Did you want me to get copies of that, so you don't have to?
Actually, I read it, and I'm going to pass it over to Rich, and then I'm going to pass it to Brad. I got, and I'm really familiar with that stuff, so I'm
Okay.
If yours is the next big idea, and you need the right place to fine-tune it, build it, launch it. If you're only your best when you can play more than you work. If inspiration comes from the outside, you belong in Curry County. The westernmost point of the land you love, and the edge between familiar and uncharted. Break the pattern, be where the airports are as close as the beaches, and industry and recreation never cease to amaze. Dock, dive, and dine in a single day, and never lose your connection. This is the threshold of the West. Live where you can do you, and do it well, at the farthest point from ordinary. Curry County, living on the edge.
One of the things I really appreciate about our entire region is that we embrace who we are, and I think that's what unifies us. Once the timber and fishing industries collapsed, it took us a long time to get back on our feet. People didn't quite grasp the idea that once these jobs left, they weren't going to get other family wage jobs. And it crippled us.
Things were getting really dire, so we just thought that this was an opportunity to maybe look at that public land a little differently, and how it could bring more dollars into our region.
The Wild Rivers Coast is so unique because there are more wild and scenic rivers here than anywhere else in the lower 48 states. The scenic beauty is just amazing. There's so many different places to go, from the national forests down to the protected ocean, and it's just a really special place.
I guess I didn't really know how special it was, though, until I moved away to Portland and came back and saw all the potential here.
We're uncrowded, we're unspoiled, and we're a little difficult to get to, but my God, once you come here, you fall in love.
We just thought if we could pull people to come into this Wild Rivers Coast and stay longer, and explore a little farther into our backcountry, there was a lot of opportunities for them to experience.
I think our whole future is at stake here. This area is ready to go, we just need to give it a little kick in the butt.
I'm going to be honest, when the Rural Tourism Studio came here, I was skeptical because I didn't see far enough ahead that we actually could collaborate regionally. And I'm pleasantly surprised, it's been amazing.
The Rural Tourism Studios was the first time we were able to come together as a region to talk about the future of our economy.
If we can have a strong tourism economy in this area, it's going to benefit the whole community.
We have to rely on ourselves, and I think through this program, it's sort of opened our eyes to what we could do when we work together. Community leaders really focused on three areas. Outdoor recreation, food, and agricultural tourism, and really building community relationships.
In our area, a lot of the food that's grown all gets shipped away. And so now we're realizing that we can capture some of that local food that's grown here. The Eat Fresh and Local Action Team has hosted a series of networking events, bringing together the area growers with the area vendors so that we could have more local food available to the visitors to our area. And now we're seeing more local food in our grocery stores, in our restaurants, and we have a new local food co-op.
We created a farm trail from Bandon to Port Orford. We did nine U-Pic farms, and it just gained traction, and people loved it.
Langloes is less than 500 people, it's very small. So we have to bring in tourists, and being on the farm trail, even though it's just beginning, has really helped do that. We really want to make it a destination for anybody. My mom and I began Dragonfly Farm just three years ago. When I found out that I could grow a seed and turn that into food, it was like, oh my gosh, why wouldn't you do this? I just quit my, my day job, and I just signed the paper to be an official co-owner of the farm. This is what I want to do for the rest of my life, and grow with the community.
Out of the Outdoor Recreation Action Team, we came up with a series of maps that show where the best places to go recreate are. We know where we're going to send people now, and we got a great map that shows all the best places to go see.
For us to get a mapping project done to this extent is pretty impressive. We're patting ourselves on the back. I don't know who anybody else is, but we're doing it.
From that, we decided that there was some places that needed help, so we came up with a mountain bike plan. And we also worked on designating a state scenic bikeway. The Outdoor Recreation Action Team was also looking at how we can make scuba diving better in this area. So we came up with the idea for a scuba fill station. So now people that want to come and dive in this area, they can dive for multiple days because they can get their tanks filled up again. When I started the Rural Tourism Studio, my business, South Coast Tours, was really small. And now we've grown to about five or six guides, and we're doing tours all over from Brookings all the way up to Coos Bay.
Overall, tourism is on the rise here. We've had a bang last two years, and it's like a breath of fresh air down here.
My hope for the area is that we still keep that sense of place.
Loving a place to death is a big concern that I have, and it's a balance. We're going to promote tourism, but we want to do it in a sustainable way. One of the biggest reasons that this area has been so successful since the tourism studio is the people that are involved. We have a lot of great, motivated, smart people who understand the need to promote tourism in the right way. And it's really all about the people.
When you live in a rural community like we do, from Bandon down to Brookings, and you're strapped for cash, relationships are crucial.
As a community, I think you need to come together and find out what your mission and goals are collectively. Then you can work into smaller groups, knowing that you have the backing of the whole community behind you.
As long as everybody's just super excited about it, and passionate about what they're doing, and they can work together, then anything's possible.
Own what you have, and don't try to be something that you're not. It's going to be hard, it's going to take a long time, so roll up your sleeves and just dig in with an open mind.
What draws you to the Oregon coast? Is it the green and blue surf on a brilliant sunny day? Or angry boiling waves during a raging winter storm? Do you prefer quiet coves or powerful breakers churning the sand? How about sand castles? Do you come for the rising tide or the setting sun? To marvel at whales gliding through the sea or flying in the sky? Reasons to travel the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are as far-reaching as your imagination. This is a spectacular part of Oregon that traces the entire coastline along Highway 101, guiding you to the sea and away again, to coastal towns, big and small, lowland marshes, and breathtaking overlooks. It's a long byway stretching from the mouth of the Columbia River to the California border, 363 miles in all, of some of the most unblemished awe-inspiring seascapes you'll find anywhere. In addition to its designation as a scenic byway, Highway 101 in Oregon also has been selected as an all-American road. That means when you come here, you will experience one of only 31 roads considered to be the best of the best in America.
You know, when people come to the Oregon coast, they're really astonished how beautiful it is. And what separates it from many of the other places in North America that are coastal is how undeveloped it is. And that's because Oregon had a very far-sided land use program back in the 1970s. We have all these wonderful state parks along the scenic byway that are perfect places to stop and enjoy nature in a relatively unspoiled way.
From the north, you begin in Astoria, the first permanent European settlement in the Pacific Northwest. It's a genuine maritime community with ship traffic from around the world seeking harbor up the Columbia. The official state maritime museum of Oregon sits here on the river. Beautiful Victorian houses dot the hillside. And standing 600 feet above sea level is the 125-foot Astoria Column. It features a hand-painted spiral frieze that would stretch over 500 feet if unwound. Heading south, you'll find the community of Seaside, a popular vacation spot that offers miles of public beaches, an oceanfront promenade, and a downtown core packed with restaurants, shops, and even a beach-type arcade. Cannon Beach is home to one of Oregon's most photographed natural wonders: Haystack Rock. Get your shots from the beach, or take a short drive up to Ecola State Park and look down on this 235-foot work of art. The picturesque small town is filled with art galleries, shops, and cafes. Ready for more? 10 miles to the south, this is the view from Cape Falcon. You're 700 feet above the Pacific. Here, the Pacific Coast Byway has been carved out of Nea County Mountain and held in place by stone walls built in the 1930s by craftsmen in the Civilian Conservation Corps. Upon descending the mountain, the highway drifts inward around Tillamook Bay to Tillamook, the unofficial dairy capital of Oregon. The verdant valley of dairy farms in this area produces 25 million gallons of milk annually. Much of that is processed into natural cheddar cheese. And near more than 800 miles of navigable waters, Tillamook is a crossroads for North Coast recreation. From here, you owe it to yourself to veer off Highway 101 to explore the Three Cape Scenic Loop. This drive places you right at the beach, beginning with Cape Mir's, home to the shortest lighthouse in Oregon. Nine lighthouses stand sentinel along Oregon's coastline. They're monuments to our maritime heritage, towering links to the past, and as much a part of the rugged Oregon coastal landscape as any offshore monolith. The Cape Mir's Lighthouse was first illuminated in 1890. Oregon's oldest lighthouse is at Cape Blanco, the westernmost point in the state. It was commissioned in 1870 to aid shipping generated by gold mining and the lumber industry. The 93-foot-high Yaquena Head Lighthouse is the tallest in Oregon. Today, its automated light continues to aid navigation at the entrance to Yaquena Bay. Many of the lighthouses are open to the public. Most happen to be excellent places to view nesting seabirds and offshore sea life. Tide pools, those rocky areas between high and low tides, support unique and diverse plants and animals. Vast amounts of colorful, otherworldly creatures wait to be discovered. But while cautiously, these organisms are tough enough to withstand the pounding surf but are utterly vulnerable to human activity. Wildlife and sea life abound on the coast.
There are six national wildlife refuges along the Oregon coast. The Pacific Coast Scenic Byway bisects these refuges or goes alongside them. It provides you the opportunity to see a wide variety of abundant wildlife, including seabirds, seals and sea lions, deer and elk, and many other wildlife.
Cape Kewanda lies at the southern end of the Three Cape Scenic Loop, near the town of Pacific City. Here, you'll find a second Haystack Rock on the byway. Hike up the dune to marvel at stunning views of sandstone formations as they turn yellow, gold, or even red in the changing sunlight. If your timing is right, you'll spot one or two of the Dory fleet sprint onto the beach after a day of fishing. How's this for a dinner setting? Restaurants along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway accommodate just about any taste. Many serve an ocean view with every meal. Up and down the coast, you'll find seafood, of course, but don't limit yourself just because you're by the water. The Central Coast begins around Lincoln City, which is one of the larger communities on the byway. It has a reputation for being windy and was recognized by Kite Lines Magazine as the best place to fly a kite in North America. It was incorporated from several small towns, and as a result, offers a sandy beach that is seven and a half miles long.
It is 11:15. Calling our meeting out of our process, this is the three county budget meeting. We've got an interesting morning. So we are gonna move on to the budget process now. Starting to go through the tabs, I had a couple of statements, a couple of general statements I just wanted to get out real quick. Sort of overall, when I went through this, I was thinking that this year there's certainly some increased personnel costs. This year, we just can't do everything. And I've noticed in a lot of the budgets that I see both personnel increases and material increases in the budgets. And as we go through these, I'll be talking about trying to get those material costs back down to where they were last year, subject to a review of our year-to-date cost. Because we can't do it all this year. We have to pick, what are we gonna do? Are we going to focus on getting our employees to the pay statuses that they need to be at? And if that, in fact, is the direction we're going, which I don't think we have a lot of room to negotiate that, then we have to really cut back on our materials and services and keep them as close to last year as possible. Otherwise, it just simply is not enough money to go around. So I've got a couple more things, and then we'll...
Can I just address that really quick?
I'd just like to finish my statement.
All right.
Almost done, and then I will certainly go through that. The second thing I noted is, it would be good if the county could get to having purchasing centralized. Not for everything. So there's times when the Sheriff's Department, like, needs to buy uniforms and equipment and stuff like that. That's something they need to do on their own. But relative to office supplies, office furniture, and things of that nature, I think moving that into more of a centralized purchasing, where the purchasing has specific types of chairs that they're buying, and they're buying them at vaults, and they're giving them at a reduced cost. So when a department is asking for a chair, you're just basically pulling that out of the inventory that you may have. These things will save the county a good deal of money over time. Because if each department is buying individual desks and chairs, the costs are gonna be exorbitant. So we need to try to think about that. That's not something we're gonna be able to do now. But that's some advice I have about trying to lower our overall costs. The last item I have is just that we have a lot to do today. And so I appreciate everybody's support in trying to minimize our conversation about topics and to really focus on getting through these. I'm not trying to rush, but I do wanna focus on what our budget items are and getting through those in a very organized fashion. That is it for my statement. Louise?
So the materials and services that you were speaking of, the increases are three things. It has nothing to do with what they're purchasing. It has to do with their admin costs, which are increased costs from commissioners, increased costs from the IT department, small decrease from the VOC office, and increased insurance costs. That's what those materials and services increases are. In some cases, I can think of four or five cases, the actual materials and services that they budget for, for their department, has decreased already. So I don't see how you're going to decrease the minimal materials and services that these departments have budgeted for because of increased admin costs and increased insurance costs.
I already took that into consideration. I went when I marked all this up. We can't change liability insurance costs. We can't change admin costs, which will go up if there's an increase on the elected official side. Totally get all of that. But I've marked a series of sections where people have $5,000 material costs, and now they're asking for 10. We can't do that this year. If we're gonna invest in our employees, then we invest in our employees. But unless the year-to-date tells us that their current year-to-date spending is in line with their new request, we should be refocused back on those last year's numbers for materials and supplies. Because in my opinion, there simply isn't enough money to do everything that we need to do this year. And as we go through these, I will call those out that I have.
All right. So I did hand this out for the review and deliberation part, so that I did make some comments on them. And I intend to approve it. I intend to mark that one, you know, approved, so that I know that nothing was missed that we need to go over, so. Are you on?
Thank you. All right. So having said that, just another point of order. So is the process to, like, our first tab is BOPTA. Is our process to go through that and then take a vote and approve it, and then move on to the second item? And then when we do Friday, it's just an overall process? Roger. Make sure we're on the same page. All right, well, if everyone would please turn to the Board of Property Tax Appeals. That should be tab number one.
And Louise was sweet with the page numbers, thank you.
Page number is 13. And I didn't see any issues there, and I would like to make a motion that we approve the BOPTA budget pass.
I will second that.
Did we have a motion?
Motion and second.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Call in favor.
Aye.
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 Check.
Motion carries. Next, we're gonna move on to the next item, which is non-departmental. That starts on page 14. The only thing I noted on here was, on line seven, there's $800,000 in for BLM timber payments. Should that be $928,000? Is that the line item for that?
$928 is this year's revenue. It is not for next year. The one that we just received, that $928, that's not this next year's money. The budget, the current budget for that is $1 million. The year before, it was $1 million one. And that's because of the SRS affects that line item. Before that, we were getting $700,000 to $800,000 for our ONC BLM payments. So the increase that was in this year's budget and in last year's receipts is because of the two-year SRS payment.
The $928, they had already budgeted into 1819's budget, not into 1920. They'd already spent the money that we didn't have yet, knowing that we were going while we were supposed to get it, so.
I think that's an erroneous statement. We did not spend money that we did not have yet. That money was budgeted for and received in the year, same year.
Put it this way, you put that money in the budget already. The $1 million is there, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and now we've received. All we're talking about is what was announced the other day, the $928,000? That's what...
Yes, and that announcement was for money that was already in the process of being received. It was not new money.
Okay, and that, but what I'm saying is, so you're not confused? Is that's what Jared Duquet was speaking about when he said the $800,000 on line seven?
Yeah.
Should that be $928,000? That's the money he's speaking about. I'm just clarifying the record, that that money was already in, put into the 1819 budget. And that's why it cannot be in the 1920 budget.
Yes.
So is that then part of the unassigned fund balance moving forward on line 31? Or was it $800,000 was the... I'm trying to figure out. Look, I see number seven. I see a Fed payment that says SRS. I get told we got $928,000. Somebody help me understand where the $928 is. Because that's $800,000, so where's the $928?
Okay, let me explain. I went through this whole thing in that little paper I wrote, because I thought there was confusion yesterday. Okay, we have two SRS payments that they did, two years, period. That was 1917-18, and 1918-19. The $928 went in the 1918-19... 2018, 2019. Sorry, I was off by a hundred years. Oh, well. So it's already this year. It's done. It's this year, but she's projecting that we'll get $800,000 next year.
Next year. So...
Because we still get the ONC payments, even if there's no SRS.
So our carryforward balance, I'm not saying that that whole amount is in there, but if there were any money left out of the SRS, that would be in that carryforward amount?
It would, but we got $900,000 and I budgeted $1,000, so it's actually kind of short of the budget. So it's part of our carryover in the sense that any budgeted, anything over-budgeted revenues that come in more than that would carryover.
Okay.
Anybody reads that paper that I put together? It kind of explains things pretty simply, how it, you know, the money came in.
So the next question I had was on line number 21, relative to the working capital reserve. Do we need to have $750,000 in that line item? What's our current year-to-date usage?
What page are you on?
I'm on page 16.
16, line 21.
And if we could get our year-to-date on that subject, just to see where we're at on that.
Okay, so working capital reserve means that you actually don't use that money? So there is no year-to-date on that. And also, the fiscal policy in the county requires that we have basically what's called a contingency. And it's, I'd have to look at it again, but I believe that the... It's like 10%. I'm sure, I just really don't remember what that contingency amount is. And this line item is part of that contingency that we're required to have. So that line item, the one right below it, the non-spendable, and then there's several contingency lines, the $25,000 capital outlay, and then another contingency in other requirements. So those all added together, I don't know why they set it up that way. I've just been following what they had been doing before. But those all together is the operating contingency of the general fund and protects the carryover balance.
So my question on this is, does it need to be at $750,000, or could we lower that to $500,000?
It needs to be at $750,000, in my opinion.
Is that state statute, or...
No, it's my conservative... Unless you want next year's carryover balance to be another $200 in the hole, I would not change that. That doesn't make any sense.
$200,000 or $200,000?
$200,000.
Oh, okay. It's kind of like my year 2000.
So the reason I'm asking that question is because I think this year we need to put some of the general fund to work and not have a bunch of reserve funds. We need to have some reserve, every organization does. If there's a, you know, some sort of a rule or something that you have in the county that says that, it just seems to me to be a lot of money that's set aside in reserve that isn't put into play. And I think this year, we probably need a little bit more money put into play.
The reserve is also to have a cash balance in the first few months of the year before you start getting your property tax collections. So you have four months of no activity, and you get a little bit of money in November, December. So if you don't have the carryover balance, then we're gonna have a cash flow problem, a severe cash flow problem, paying payroll and bills.
That's true.
I understand. I'm simply asking the question.
It's a good one.
So I have to agree with Ken a little bit here, and I wanna make sure I'm on the same sheet of paper. But $750 seems a little high. But, because on one hand, you're saying this is what we're gonna get anticipated from the other funds, and then you're saying we're gonna get PIL funds that's built into next year that we don't already have. But I still think $750,000, $500,000, and I don't know all the inner workings, but I think I'm not against moving it down to $500,000.
Please.
I'm just curious, what is payroll for a month? Just an approximate figure?
I don't know what the cash balance, we'd have to ask Julie that. I don't see that kind of detail of cash.
My question is, if there's a $200,000 shortfall, what's the contingency for it?
That is the contingency. You're taking, the short, if there's $200,000, there's no contingency anymore.
Let me restate my question. We dropped this to $500,000, and all of a sudden, we're not making payroll.
We don't make payroll. There's no contingency for it if you don't have the money.
So the board wouldn't look at going to the Road Department, taking out a loan for one year and getting flush? And waiting for the income to come in to back, you know? I think there's ways to do that. I mean, even in our organization, I carry a pretty healthy reserve, but not to sacrifice operations. And I think this year's just a little touchy. We've got some pretty significant cost increases relative to personnel. And I'm just trying to find ways that don't hurt depart- And I'm just trying to find ways that don't hurt departments and operations to make more money available. Again, I don't wanna get stuck on this point. If it's a, if, if the recommendation is to leave it at seven fifty from the commissioners and staff, then that's probably where we need to keep it. If it's possible to move that down to five hundred thousand and put two hundred and fifty at play, then that would be something that I would think would be a good process.
And obviously, taking money out of the road funds is not really an option that we wanna consider that often, but it is a contingency in that case.
Certainly. I would not pay my employees, whether I'm public or private, I would make sure my employees get paid, I don't care what I gotta do. If I gotta sell ten vehicles, my employees are gonna get paid.
So, i- if I could just clarify with Ms. Colstrom, this is seven fifty on the working capital reserve, the non-spendable is eighty? And what else is in there, roughly another twenty-five, you said?
The seven fifty and eighty is actually kind of.
Lumped together?
Sorry. If you, if you look up in the revenues, there's three pieces of the carryover revenue. One is the unassigned fund balance, one is an assigned working capital reserve, and one is a non-spendable fund balance. So, that seven fifty and eighty corresponds down here for the seven fifty and eighty.
Okay.
So, they're kind of reserved, protecting the carryover balance.
So, could, could I ask you to ask Ms. Swift, or if she's listening, to perhaps give us a, an approximate on our monthly payroll? So that we have an informed decision that we're gonna make here a little bit later.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we can pass on approving this particular item and move on to the next item until we get clarification on that. Julie?
Sheriff, I just have a question. I know I've asked about this before, but I would, I would feel better if we had our marijuana revenues broken out into, into here. I know we show gambling, I know we show O L C C. I just think that when the sheriff, you know, a lot of that money is supposed to be going towards law enforcement, and the budget never shows how much is in there. And I think it would help to know exactly what revenues we are getting from the marijuana industry, so that when he needs funding, we know what's actually there.
I think I made the comment before that we are changing the title of that one. It is in our revenue expenditure numbers. If you, I only, I have this one up, but if you want me to pull the other one up, I will. But.
And this year, when he went to make a contribution to Sint, he had no idea how much money was there, so we ended up having to write a grant for it.
See this one? This right here, what this says is, it should say state marijuana taxes, like it says tobacco, alcohol. So, that's where we are right now.
So, moving forward, that'll say marijuana?
Yeah, we're changing that, and we're changing the title here in the budget book, so the adopted budget book will actually say this thing, things, shared dash state dash marijuana taxes.
Thank you.
Good, yeah. So, we'll come back to non-departmental, I've already got that marked, then we'll come back to that. Moving on to county clerk and elections, that is page seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. So, in reviewing the clerk's elections department, there's a twenty-four thousand dollar drop in revenue, which she talked about. There's a nearly eleven thousand dollar increase in personnel cost. And when I got over here to the materials and services, under professional services general, there was an increase from five thousand to eight thousand. And I'm recommending that that be seven thousand. On line number, now I gotta get a piece of paper.
What line is that?
That is line number two.
Two on page nineteen.
Page nineteen, I'm sorry.
Could I comment on that, when you get a chance? Don't we have a, a big election coming up next year that's gonna require a lot more?
The reason that the lines in the elected department is, next year is a, is a primary. The primaries, elections do not get support from other taxing districts. So, if you look up above the special district reimbursements for the other elections like that we had this year, we get reimbursed for those costs. And in, in primaries and general election years, the ballots, everything is the cost of the county clerk. And so, that's why all of these are increased, is because they have no, there's a big election and they're responsible for that.
So, looking at this information up here doesn't help us much, because we did things differently this year.
This year, this is a.
Non-primary.
Non-special election year for the elections.
So, I, I certainly heard that as we processed that, but I, you know, the issue is twenty-four thousand dollars less in revenue. Nearly eleven thousand dollar increase in personnel expenses, a twenty-three thousand dollar increases in materials and services, which is an additional fifty-eight thousand dollars from the general fund than the previous year. And again, going back to my original statement when we started, we, you know, if, if this is the year of making our people whole in terms of their salaries, we have to be cognizant of what we're spending on materials and services. Can't do it all, it's just, there's not enough money to do it all. And so, the other line items, and I'll just go through these quickly so we don't get stuck, and then we can certainly discuss where we're at. The copying and printing was a doubling of cost. Instead of sixteen-two, I just sort of, on my own, put fourteen thousand, that's not the number we have to do, it's just my recommendation. We go down a little further to postage, it was six thousand and nine thousand, I suggested eight thousand. On supplies, non-capital equipment, it was zero, and now we're at thirty-two hundred, I'm suggesting two thousand. Collectively, that would be a fifty-four hundred dollar reduction in materials and services. Please.
So, I have one question, Louise, if things were juggled around, all within this one fund, like if they had to spend less somewhere and more other places, that would be totally legal, correct?
So, what you're saying, if I, if I spend less here and more someplace else?
Well, like she's got repair and maintain, or excuse me, property insurance is a non-brainer, but advertising or copying and printing, could she interchange those just a little bit? As far as the costs?
As I understand, Commissioner Gold, the, the rules have been, lines are not the issue, it's the category that's the issue.
Exactly, that's what I thought.
And having some flexibility in the movement.
So, she could make adjustments with all of that.
Right, is that also your understanding, Louise?
Yes, the appropriation level is the total of materials and services, not the line items in the materials and services. So, if, if there's cost savings, there's, and one, like, the postage goes up, down instead of up, and it doesn't cost her nine thousand dollars, but her copying and printing for getting the envelopes printed in and everything out, costs more. They all can offset each other within her materials and services budget.
So, you're looking at taking a maximum of, for what you've recommended, is fifty?
Fifty-four hundred dollars, auto materials and services. That represents about a nine percent reduction.
Let's have one quick question. If you do this, and her costs run over, can she come back and request more?
Supplemental budget, correct?
Supplemental budget?
It would be a supplemental budget, but I, I, I'm kind of hesitant about recommending that you reduce a elections budget that has no choice but to put out on election.
Did you just say nine percent?
Approximately nine percent, I'll pull out my calculator.
Okay, thank you.
If the total increase in cost was fifty-eight thousand dollars and we're removing fifty-four hundred, it's somewhere in the nine percent category. And, you know, I was conscientious of, I understood the part about the election, you know, this is the tough part about doing this job. When you're sitting here on the budget committee, we're trying to be thoughtful about the amount of funds that we have to work with in the county. And again, recognizing that we have some high personnel costs, and trying to, trying to reduce some of those other materials and services costs. With, within normal protocols, I wanna be careful not to put somebody in a position to have to do a supplemental. But at the same time, we gotta carve off some money. I don't know another way to do it.
What would, I have a question for Louise. There's a little box at the bottom here, when you're going across finance on page nineteen, where it says finance, payroll, yada, yada, yada. That's a shared expense with other departments, like the commissioners?
Yes, what actually those little boxes are, there is in our big, huge Excel spreadsheet that we put this budget into, there's one sheet that has, that has all of the admin costs on it. And so, this links to that, says equals that, where that goes to. And so, when I'm inputting the budget, I, I have like a little guide that says I'm putting it in correct, the admin cost correctly from that spreadsheet. So, I'm typing that proposed budget column in, the other one's a link from the sheet that actually calculates that. So, it, it's a double check to make sure that that number is correct.
Just one, one point, what I did when I went through these is anywhere that she has those boxes, just line those out, 'cause you really can't touch them. The insurance cost is the insurance cost, and the admin fee is the admin fee, there is no moving for those numbers. So, I left those alone and only focused on other materials and services.
I, I will say, if you, if you look at the history though, seventeen and eighteen, where they were, you know, active election years, you know, you'll see that the, the costs are more in line with her budget for nineteen and twenty versus the two thousand nineteen year. You know, where her, where her copying and printing was twelve-nine and then twenty-one thousand. So, you're, you know, you're in the middle there, some of the other ones for the postage was nine thousand, seventeen it was ten, in eighteen it was ninety-two hundred. So, I think last year might have been a bit of an anomaly for them, that, you know, there wasn't a lot going on. So, I think if we look at the previous history, it is a little bit more in line, with the exception of line fifteen.
Yes.
Exactly.
Just doing my part here.
Oh, I.
Commissioner Boyce?
Watching this last, this would be my third budget year. I don't know how basic it would seem, or too, too simple perhaps, but just do a five percent across the board, every department, because of what you, and we know the risks are here. Maybe five percent wouldn't even do what, what we're looking at. So, okay, you're just confirming why I asked this question, and I've been waiting for this to be, you know, someone else to bring this up. So, cutting to the chase here, if we have those issues where a department comes and, wait a minute, that five percent budget, this, this task just happened, creating this shortfall, come for a supplemental budget, budget committee meets quarterly, I think that leaves us the door open. I am concerned of five percent though, you know, obviously, all of us off the top of our heads here, is not enough. But I think we are faced with that tough choice, in my view, thank you.
Thank you. So, that was my twenty-nine cents worth. Any other recommendations about clerk's materials and services costs?
Well, it would be, I, I'd like to recommend that we look at the history here on this particular one, because the clerk is an essential part of this county, and what she has to do. Not what she can do, but what she's mandated by law to do. So, I, I could absolutely see a, a cutback on the supplemental non-capital equipment. You know, even down to a thousand dollars, cutting twenty-two hundred from her budget on that, but leaving the other intact by looking at the history of, of the elections office. So, I, I might make a recommendation that we, we reduce the, the budget only by twenty-two hundred instead of fifty-four hundred.
Commissioner Pash, what about line item number eight? Where if we look at the second preceding year, it was thirteen thousand, and then it's sixteen thousand two. Could we push that to fourteen and take another little savings there of twenty-two hundred dollars?
Well, and we could do that, and, and again, I'm, I'm, this is something that if we needed, we could perhaps, you know, this, you're only talking about a couple thousand dollars here, so could you move one line to another? Absolutely here, and then at, at the risk of maybe having to do a supplemental budget on that in a quarterly meeting, absolutely. So, now we're back at forty-two hundred instead of fifty-four.
So, I'd make the following recommendation, is that we adjust line eight to fourteen thousand dollars. And we adjust line fifteen to one thousand dollars, that would be a total reduction of forty-four hundred dollars.
Is that a motion?
Uh, let me phrase that in the, that is a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Where are you moving to what?
Line item on page nineteen.
Eight, printing.
Line item eight, from sixteen thousand two hundred down to fourteen thousand, that would be a reduction of twenty-two hundred.
Right.
And then line item fifteen, supplies, non-capital equipment, from thirty-two hundred dollars down to one thousand dollars, that would be a twenty-two hundred dollar reduction. Having an overall impact of a forty-four hundred dollar reduction to total materials and services.
When you talk about non-capital, what are you talking about?
Non-capital. Capital is usually five thousand dollars or more.
But what, what does it entail, is this envelopes, paper?
Oh, no, that's, uh, let me get to that, and I gotta put my glasses back on.
That's fif- line fifteen.
Supplies, non-capital equipment, it could be a chair, it could be just about anything.
I don't remember what she said it was for, she said it was for a specific item, but I don't remember exactly what it was.
Can we find out what that specific item is, or are we not wanting to go down that path?
Well, the problem is, we'll be at this another week if we do that, 'cause then we got everybody coming back in the check.
Just asking.
And what they can do is move, again, they can move one item to another and within the category.
Jockeying for a position, as we call it.
So, I'm, I'm sorry.
Robin Peter to PayPal.
Can you repeat one more time?
Yes, ma'am.
The line eight, from sixteen-two to fourteen even?
Yes.
So, that's twenty-two hundred?
Yes, ma'am. And then on line fifteen, from thirty-two hundred to one thousand, a reduction of twenty-two hundred.
Okay.
For an overall reduction of forty-four hundred dollars in materials and services. That's a motion.
I second it.
Any further discussion? Call for the questions?
Aye.
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 Mr. Chair, you have H R Director Swift, did you need to ask questions of her?
I'm sorry?
She may have the payroll that we were requesting from the other item.
Oh, back into non-departmental?
Yes.
Let's flip back over to non-departmental, please.
Page sixteen.
So, Julie, the, just so that you have reference, the question I was asking is, we have in our non-departmental, on line, it's horrible getting old. Can't see the way I used to see it.
Twenty-one and twenty-two.
So, on line twenty-one, there was a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar working capital reserve, and on line twenty-two, a non-spendable of eighty thousand dollars. And my question was, can we reduce that down to five hundred? There was discussion about, well, that's our backup in case we don't get our monies in during the first couple months of operation, helps support payroll. So, the question is, what is our monthly payroll cost?
For April, it was just under seven hundred twenty-eight thousand, and that's wages and benefits.
One month. So, we need a.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, that will cover you for one month, at seven fifty. Making a point.
Right.
Which is, five hundred or seven fifty really doesn't matter at that point, because what are you gonna do the next month? You're gonna have to look at another way of recouping those dollars. Any other questions from Julie Swift?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we want to continue our discussion on the non-departmental? Do we want to continue our discussion on the non-departmental?
Might as well get it over with.
Yes, sir.
What page?
We're back at fifteen, sixteen.
Okay, so I have something for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Our Financial Policies Manual says to meet seasonal cash flows, shortfalls, and maintain the county's credit rating, the budget shall provide for an anticipated undesegregated fund balance between nine percent and fourteen percent. So nine percent is the lowest you can have contingencies for. This was adopted in February two thousand two.
And that would be nine percent of what number?
Total budget? Total budget.
Okay.
So I'm going to look over here. The total budget as it stands, on the original proposed, without the adding, because we added about nine-hundred-thousand dollars to that, as it stands, ten percent is that you would have to have a contingency of nine-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand-eight-forty, and that's at the lowest nine percent. If you take two-hundred thousand off of that one, and I'm adding all four whatever pieces that is basically the General Fund contingencies, right now, it stands at a million seventy-five. And if you take two-hundred off that, it'd be eight-seventy-five, which is below the required nine percent.
So our total again is one million?
One million seventy-five, and that's what we have right now, and we're required to have at least nine-sixty-nine-eight-forty.
Hundred and fifteen, we're close.
But if I add the hundred thousand dollars to what you've just added in the past few days, if I add all that in, I mean, that's, it hasn't been voted on, but if we do add all that in, that's another, then we're really, really close to where we're sitting right now without taking anything out of that contingency.
So would it be prudent for us to maybe save non-departmental for last, just to see where we're at?
I think we should, and then where, I think that might be one of your last adjustments. So if you do want to reduce one of these, we could reduce it down to the nine percent.
Correct. And I think that's, I agree with you, that's a good way to do it. Let's process it that way.
Okay.
I mean, we all have to agree, we're not, everyone's not going to leave here with a great deal. I mean, a good negotiation in a budget is, everybody gives up something, so.
I just wanted to, I was just kind of scared about my minimum required.
I understand.
Well, that's good you looked it up. I appreciate that.
Appreciate that.
I think these are good discussions to have, which is the whole point of having a Budget Committee. So let's move on to County Clerk Elects, actually, we did that.
Yeah, County Treasurer.
Sorry, I just didn't check it off. So did we vote on that one?
No.
Okay. So back to County Clerk Elections.
You voted.
I thought we voted.
Oh, yeah, we did.
We voted to reduce that, and so...
Thank you.
No, I guess we're done.
Don't want to miss anything. Okay, so next is going to be the County Treasurer, and that is on page twenty-one, twenty-two. I didn't see anything in there that, you know, overall, there's about a four-thousand-dollar increase to the contribution from the General Fund, but there's really, she's not asking for any additional funds anywhere. It's pretty much do the same thing as I did last year, with the exception of the increase in personnel costs. So I would make a motion that we approve the Treasurer's budget, as written.
Second.
I have an adjustment to that.
Oh, the seven-hundred-dollar, or no?
No, it's moving the Salary Regular to Salary Irregular.
Okay.
Oh, that's right, I had that circled, you're right.
Perfect. So amending my motion to include that the Salary Regular listed on line seven will be restated to say Salary Irregular.
I'll second that.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is the Tax Collection Department, and that's on page twenty-five, page twenty-six. And looking at those, I saw a fifty-seven-hundred-dollar increase overall in our revenues, thirty-thousand-six-hundred-dollar increase in our personnel costs for a net increase of almost twenty-five thousand dollars in cost at that line point. Really, the only question I had on there was the Repair and Maintenance Software, but he answered that question when he said that the annual cost for maintaining that program was going to be ninety-seven. So I think he's budgeting for that software out of two budgets, does that sound right?
Yes, it's split between, this is Assessor and the other, or this, is this one tax? Okay, this one's tax and the other one's Assessor. So it's split between the two budgets.
So we have forty-eight-five and twenty-four-five, which is a total of seventy-three thousand dollars. That makes us twenty-seven thousand dollars light for the ninety-seven thousand dollar annual maintenance costs, is that correct?
That would be correct if the annual maintenance costs started that first year, but he said that it didn't start until the twenty-one, twenty-two budget.
Perfect. Okay.
Is that counting the CAFRA?
CAFRA would be eighteen percent, but like she said, we won't have a maintenance cost until twenty-one, twenty, or twenty-twenty-one, so it's not a moot issue for this budget.
Okay, thank you.
So then, the only other thing that I have to add in is, you know, he needs to get that software program, I don't know another way to say it, I'm just going to, if we don't get the information converted from the old system to the new system and transfer into a reliable system, and that system goes down, this creates enormous liability for the county in that the taxes will not be able to be collected. It is likely that the taxing districts would take legal action against the county and probably prevail on that matter.
Well, sure, Ben.
And I think the single most important thing we need to do is get that new software system going. So how do we plug in that hundred-and-seventy thousand? And I think that Louise already did that.
I think if you move to approve the change that the Budget Committee has handed out for the May fourteenth change, then you have that spreadsheet that shows the line items that changed, and I could go off of that for putting it in.
So I would like to make a motion that we approve the Elections, excuse me, give me a second.
Assessor.
Tax Collection. Well, let's do this, let's get through the Assessor's Office first, and can we just do it as a whole, or do they need to be done separately?
You could do both of them, just say Tax Collection and Assessor's Office as...
Yeah, and that way we can be done with this part of it before we go to lunch. And so then we have County Assessor's Office, which is on page twenty-seven and twenty-eight, really a de minimis reduction in revenue, really doesn't matter. The bigger higher cost there is this ninety-eight thousand dollar increase in personnel cost, and did that include those two positions he was talking about, with the potential...
Yes. If you see up above on line four, this, the reason you don't see much of a change is because he did budget for the pilot program last year, although it didn't get approved because it was an emergency application for it, and it didn't get through the Emergency Application Committee. So he's put it basically back in again. So the increase in payroll costs is actually due to the revenue there in line four, plus the regular payroll changes that were done.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the Tax Collection and Assessment, County Assessor's Office budgets as, and including our recent changes that we provided to Louise. I think that's a good, clear motion.
It is. I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So we also have GIS here, and so let's just get that done, because it's real quick. And that's on page thirty, and the only thing there that I had a question about is, on line eleven, there was no non-cap furniture equipment, and now there's a ten-thousand-dollar request. And my recommendation was to lower that to two thousand dollars with a eight-thousand-dollar reduction.
So I can comment on that. So currently, we don't have a plotter that works in the county, so when Jeremy, who's out doing the emergency operations and he needs to print out a big map, he cannot print out a map. So this is to buy a plotter for the county.
Does the Sheriff's Office have a printer that's capable of printing that?
I can't answer that, I don't know.
He's behind you.
Yeah, we do have a plotter, but it doesn't be used enough very often, and so we are...
You need to talk into the mic.
Just real quick.
Sorry.
We do have a plotter, and we use it mostly for search and rescue and emergency service type things. When we have a search and we need big maps, we post them up, so you've got a couple hundred searchers are looking at the maps and things, we're posting them. But the problem is, we don't use it very often, and the inks and stuff, they get old, and so we can't keep them on, you know, in store, because they go bad, too. So now we're trying to do is, like, what we're trying to do is, print a map or something once a month, just to get, keep the ink flowing and the printhead's working.
Is this a resource that you could share, so we don't have to spend the money this year to buy anyone?
Somebody needs something, we'll do what we can, so.
Do you know, too, Sheriff, does yours, is yours compatible in the field, so somebody sitting at a computer can hit and is going to print out a map?
No.
Yeah.
No, it's hooked to the network, and it's too big to haul out in a field.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you. Thank you. And again, I'm just going to sort of go back to that first point I made this year, which is, we're making an investment this year in our personnel. We can't do everything in one year. If we have equipment in the county that can be used by another department, I get it, it's not highest and best use, but at the same time, it's not an expense we're dealing with this year, and I think that eight thousand dollars is pretty significant. If it's, if the whole ten thousand was just to buy that unit, then I would recommend that we just remove the ten thousand dollar cost, and for the one-year period, we work with the GIS and working with the Sheriff's Office to print out those items. That would be my motion. Yes, Louise?
I think the Assessor has a comment sitting behind you.
Really trying to prevent that, because it really gums up the work, but yes.
Well, I know, and I don't know where you were headed with that, Julie, but there are actually two other plotters in addition to the Sheriff's Plotters. We have one in the Assessor's Office, although it's a dinosaur, it's twelve, thirteen years old. But I believe there's also another plotter in the Surveyor's Office. And, you know, I think any of the departments would be happy to assist emergency services with anything that we could. But Julie, if you still want to explore that, if you want to talk with us between next budget session, be happy to work with you on that.
Sure.
Thank you, appreciate that.
So will that line item go to zero then, correct?
Affirmative.
Yep. He was, part of that was to also, oh, I'm sorry, the training and, never mind, the training and education would be so he could learn GIS services, too, so, never mind. I just wanted to make sure we didn't cut that part out.
So this would mean that rather than a contribution from the General Fund of ten-thousand-four-hundred-and-seven dollars, that would merely be a General Fund contribution of four-hundred-and-seven dollars. Thus is my motion.
I'll second it.
Yes.
Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We must now break for lunch, and let's come back at one fifteen, does that work to everybody? Thank you.
Good job, all.
One fifteen.
If yours is the next big idea, and you need the right place to fine-tune it, build it, launch it, if you're only your best when you can play more than you work, if inspiration comes from the outside, you belong in Curry County. The westernmost point of the land you love, and the edge between familiar and uncharted. Break the pattern, be where the airports are as close as the beaches, and industry and recreation never cease to amaze. Dock, dive, and dine in a single day, and never lose your connection. This is the threshold of the West. Live where you can do you, and do it well, at the farthest point from ordinary. Curry County, living on the edge.
One of the things I really appreciate about our entire region is that we embrace who we are, and I think that's what unifies us. Once the timber and fishing industries collapsed, it took us a long time to get back on our feet. People didn't quite grasp the idea that once these jobs left, they weren't going to get other family wage jobs, and it crippled us.
Things were getting really dire, so we just thought that this was an opportunity to maybe look at that public land a little differently, and how it could bring more dollars into our region.
The Wild Rivers Coast is so unique because there are more wild and scenic rivers here than anywhere else in the lower forty-eight states. The scenic beauty is just amazing. There's so many different places to go, from the national forest down to the protected ocean, and it's just a really special place.
I guess I didn't really know how special it was, though, until I moved away to Portland and came back and saw all the potential here.
We're uncrowded, we're unspoiled, and we're a little difficult to get to, but my God, once you come here, you fall in love.
We just thought if we could pull people to come into this Wild Rivers Coast and stay longer, and explore a little farther into our backcountry, there was a lot of opportunities for them to experience.
I think our whole future is at stake here. This area is ready to go, we just need to give it a little kick in the butt.
I'm going to be honest, when the Rural Tourism Studio came here, I was skeptical, because I didn't see far enough ahead that we actually could collaborate regionally, and I'm pleasantly surprised, it's been amazing.
The Rural Tourism Studios was the first time we were able to come together as a region to talk about the future of our economy.
If we can have a strong tourism economy in this area, it's going to benefit the whole community.
We have to rely on ourselves, and I think through this program, it's sort of opened our eyes to what we could do when we work together. Community leaders really focused on three areas: outdoor recreation, food and agricultural tourism, and really building community relationships.
In our area, a lot of the food that's grown all gets shipped away, and so now we're realizing that we can capture some of that local food that's grown here. The Eat Fresh and Local Action Team has hosted a series of networking events, bringing together the area growers with the area vendors, so that we could have more local food available to the visitors to our area. And now we're seeing more local food in our grocery stores, in our restaurants, and we have a new local food co-op.
We created a farm trail from Bandon to Port Orford. We did nine U-Pick farms, and it just gained traction, and people loved it.
Langloes is less than five hundred people, it's very small, so we have to bring in tourists. And being on the farm trail, even though it's just beginning, has... And being on the farm trail, even though it's just beginning, has really helped do that. We really want to make it a destination for anybody. My mom and I began Dragonfly Farm just three years ago. When I found out that I could grow a seed and turn that into food, it was like, oh my gosh, why wouldn't you do this? I just quit my day job, and I just signed the paper to be an official co-owner of the farm. This is what I want to do for the rest of my life, and grow with the community.
Out of the Outdoor Recreation Action Team, we came up with a series of maps that show where the best places to go recreate are. We know where we're going to send people now, and we got a great map that shows all the best places to go see.
For us to get a mapping project done to this extent is pretty impressive. We're patting ourselves on the back. I don't know what anybody else is, but we're doing it.
From that, we decided that there was some places that needed help. So we came up with a mountain bike plan. And we also worked on designating a state scenic bikeway. The Outdoor Recreation Action Team was also looking at how we can make scuba diving better in this area. So we came up with the idea for a scuba fill station. So now people that want to come and dive in this area, they can dive for multiple days because they can get their tanks filled up again. When I started the Rural Tourism Studio, my business, South Coast Tours, was really small. And now we've grown to about five or six guides, and we're doing tours all over from Brookings all the way up to Kuz Bay.
Overall, tourism is on the rise here. We've had a bang up last two years, and it's like a breath of fresh air down here.
My hope for the area is that we still keep that sense of place.
Loving a place to death is a big concern that I have, and it's a balance. We're going to promote tourism, but we want to do it in a sustainable way. One of the biggest reasons that this area has been so successful since the tourism studio is the people that are involved. We have a lot of great, motivated, smart people who understand the need to promote tourism in the right way, and it's really all about the people.
When you live in a rural community like we do, from Bandon down to Brookings, and you're strapped for cash, relationships are crucial.
As a community, I think you need to come together and find out what your mission and goals are collectively. Then you can work into smaller groups, knowing that you have the backing of the whole community behind you.
As long as everybody's just super excited about it and passionate about what they're doing, and they can work together, then anything's possible.
Own what you have, and don't try to be something that you're not. It's going to be hard. It's going to take a long time. So roll up your sleeves and just dig in with an open mind.
These organisms are tough enough to withstand the pounding surf, but are utterly vulnerable to human activity. Wildlife and sea life abound on the coast.
There are six national wildlife refuges along the Oregon coast. The Pacific Coast Scenic Byway bisects these refuges or goes alongside them. It provides you the opportunity to see a wide variety of abundant wildlife, including seabirds, seals and sea lions, deer and elk, and many other wildlife.
Cape Kewanda lies at the southern end of the Three Cape Scenic Loop, near the town of Pacific City. Here you'll find a second haystack rock on the byway. Hike up the dune to marvel at stunning views of sandstone formations as they turn yellow, gold, or even red in the changing sunlight. If your timing is right, you'll spot one or two of the Dory fleet sprint onto the beach after a day of fishing. How's this for a dinner setting? Restaurants along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway accommodate just about any taste. Many serve an ocean view with every meal. Up and down the coast, you'll find seafood, of course, but don't limit yourself just because you're by the water. The central coast begins around Lincoln City, which is one of the larger communities on the byway. It has a reputation for being windy and was recognized by Kite Lines magazine as the best place to fly a kite in North America. It was incorporated from several small towns and, as a result, offers a sandy beach that is seven and a half miles long. A number of small state parks lie nestled along the ocean between Lincoln City and Newport. Stop, get out of your car, and take in the commanding views that are there, right next to your all-American road. Depot Bay boasts the world's smallest navigable harbor, six square acres in all. A seawall runs the length of the downtown, so everywhere you go, you're rewarded with a dramatic view of the Pacific. It's considered Oregon's whale-watching capital, with thousands making their way past Oregon each fall and spring. Fishing and whale-watching excursions regularly set sail from this little harbor. Leaving Depot Bay, you'll soon find yourself at Cape Fowlweather, a basalt outcropping that looms 500 feet above the water. It was here, in 1778, British Captain James Cook first sighted the mainland of North America on the Pacific coast. A fierce storm that almost put an end to his expedition earned this rugged stretch of coastline its name. Coastal weather can change by the hour. You will find a lot of wet days, but rain can become blue sky with white clouds in an afternoon. Mist kissing the headlands burns away, or storms can last for days. Some people come for those storms. Whether you find sunbursts of happiness or cloud cover like a quilt, there's always a reason to come back. Like Lincoln City, Newport is one of the larger towns on the byway. The historic bayfront on the north side of Yaquena Bay hosts one of Oregon's largest commercial fishing fleets. It has a busy, genuine working waterfront field, with fish plants and boats coming and going from as far away as Alaska. On the south side of the bay is the Oregon Coast Aquarium. Share waters beneath the ocean with sharks and rays. And don't miss the sea otters at mealtime.
Now, all four of our otters were rescued otters. They were found out in the wild.
For the next 50 miles, your trip along Highway 101 hugs the coast. Many more state parks offer opportunities to stop and take in outstanding vistas, crashing waves, and offshore rock formations. Two small towns of note are Waldport and Yahots. Waldport sits on Alsea Bay, where fishing, clamming, and crabbing are popular. The 40-mile stretch south of Waldport marks steep headlands, jagged volcanic outcrops, and jaw-dropping scenery, the rugged edge of the Oregon coast. Yahots is a quiet, unhurried artist town just a couple of miles north of Cape Perpetua. Drive to the top of this bluff, and you'll be 800 feet above the water. On a clear day, you can see 70 miles of Oregon coastline. Drive past Hacita Head Lighthouse to the Sea Lion Caves. A quick elevator ride 200 feet down puts you in America's largest sea cave, the year-round home of wild stellar sea lions. Rugged cliffs give way to graceful beaches as you approach Florence. In the spring, be on the lookout for wild rhododendrons along the roadside. Similar to Newport, you'll find an historic old-town commercial district along the Sayuslaw River. Florence is the gateway to the Oregon Dunes National Recreation Area, a 47-mile sandbox of windsculpted sand dunes towering 500 feet above sea level. These are the largest expanse of coastal sand dunes in North America. Reed Sport is at the center of the Oregon Dunes. But you can do more than ride a dune buggy or motorcycle. A short three miles east of town on Highway 38, more than 100 Roosevelt elk reside at the Dean Creek Elk Viewing Area. Early mornings or just before dusk are the best times to photograph the herd. Paying homage to Oregon's timber heritage, Reed Sport hosts an annual chainsaw sculpting championship, a time to watch three-dimensional artwork come to life right before your eyes. Mountains of sand continue at Winchester Bay. You'll also find an active marina here. It's a great place to try your hand at crabbing or take a charter for salmon or bottom fishing. The dunes end and you enter the coast's largest urban area, at Coos Bay. It has the deepest natural harbor between Seattle and San Francisco. Foreign vessels sail under the massive McCullough Bridge. You may have noticed dotted along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are many beautiful and iconic bridges. The Megler Bridge in Astoria, Yaquena Bay Bridge in Newport, Alsea Bay Bridge in Waldport, Sayuslaw River Bridge in Florence, and the magnificent McCullough Bridge in Coos Bay are works of art in their own right. Charleston is slightly off the byway at the mouth of the bay. It was once an old waterfront fishing village and has become a commercial and sport fishing center. From here, the Charleston to Bandon tour route offers another side trip off the byway. It's a wonderful way to explore a variety of natural Pacific coast beauty in a number of settings: beaches, vistas, gardens, and more. Giant sea stacks, a tiny lighthouse, and an old town await you in Bandon. Do you like to golf? This remote area on the Oregon coast has not one but three of the most stunning and challenging golf courses in the world. As you drive south of town, look for brilliant red bogs in the fall. You're passing through the cranberry capital of Oregon. After a trek through forests and farmlands, you'll reach Port Orford. The Wild Coast has begun. You're in the most westerly city in the continental United States, and you've reached some of the most awesome scenery on the byway. Here you can watch a fishing fleet launched by Crane in one of only six dolly ports in the world. Port Orford covers less than two square miles. It's similar to many communities that call this all-American road home. Small in size, still with a lot to offer. Like Manzanita, with a vibrant business district and beautiful setting at the base of Neocatney Mountain, you can board a fishing charter out of Garibaldi, swim in freshwater lakes near Dune City, catch world-class windsurfing at Pistol River. There is little development from Port Orford to Gold Beach, outlet for the renowned Rogue River. Feel like going for a ride? Jet boat excursions run from May into October up this wild and scenic river. Or maybe a midday walk on an uncrowded beach is more your speed. The last dozen miles of the Pacific Coast byway leading into Brookings save some of the best for last. Treat yourself to frequent stops along the Samuel H. Boardman Scenic Corridor. Short hikes reward you with the best views in this shining stretch of coastline. Walk, relax, and be amazed along the coves and the crashing surf. The world's northernmost redwood grove is eight miles from the mouth of the Chetco River in Brookings. So, you've toured nature's finest art museum. You've dined elegantly, hung out with sea lions, unwound like you wish you could every day. What else is there to do? Step back in history near Astoria, ride a horse along the waves near Florence, pet a baby tiger near Bandon, hike a trail, sample gourmet cheese, eat fresh-caught crab, watch a sunset.
When you come to the Oregon coast and walk on the beaches or go to the headlands and go to the small coastal towns, you really can commune with nature and you don't have huge numbers of people, but you're also able to take in one of America's last great unspoiled seascapes.
So what draws you to the Oregon coast? What favorite places lure you back again and again? Each visit is different. The ocean, the sky, the light, and the experience always continue to amaze. Shouldn't you be there?
There's something about having land and sea. Never having to choose between digging in or looking out. Here, you can go where the spirit or the wind moves you. To the tops of the trees, along secluded beaches, or into more wild and scenic rivers than anywhere else in the western United States. We're the closest place to the sunset while still keeping your feet dry and a destination where anyone can begin. We share more than we keep, so you can see more than you imagined. This is a place you have to touch, hold, and feel to believe. The entire shoreline of the West Coast's Best Coast is open to you and playgrounds made of forests are waiting for you. Escape to Curry County and don't leave anything out.
Roadway departure fatalities are a serious and often preventable problem in the United States. The Federal Highway Administration reports that 54% of all highway fatalities are caused by drivers leaving their lane of travel. The Oregon Department of Transportation is taking a proactive approach to reduce this kind of tragedy by implementing a centerline and shoulder rumble strip program.
Rumble strips are one of the most low-cost, cost-effective countermeasures that we can apply across the system.
Rumble strips are grooved patterns on the roadway that make a rumbling sound and a physical vibration immediately warning inattentive drivers that they're leaving their driving lane. Rumble strips allow drivers to self-correct and avoid an accident.
About 67% of fatal crashes in Oregon are road departure crashes, which are a vehicle can leave the lane to the right and hit a ditch, or a rock, or a tree, something like that, or cross over the centerline to the left and get in a head-on collision or a sideswipe meeting-type crash.
Over an eight-year period, ODOT engineers studied segments of 16 different highways and concluded that rumble strips are highly effective at reducing lane departures.
We did a before-and-after crash analysis to find that we have reduced head-on fatalities by 40% with the installation of centerline rumble strips.
We've been trying to find a way to deal with a problem that seems to be increasing over the last 10 or 15 years with our drivers, and that's distracted driving. And there's a lot of things that cause distracted driving. All these distractions are things that make people take their attention away from where it should be.
Comparisons between other available safety features like guardrail and concrete barriers show that shoulder and centerline rumble strips are the most cost-effective safety treatment available.
We're finding that those are very effective in trying to make sure that when you do make that mistake, it's not the last mistake you make. They help bring your attention back to the driving task and bring you back to where you should be, focusing on being in the middle of your lane and being safe.
ODOT makes a conscious effort to use a bike-friendly rumble strip design where possible and installs 12-foot bike gaps every 48 feet of rumble strip. ODOT understands that rumble strips create a noise that can be disruptive for people who live near rural highways, and we're trying to address these concerns with different approaches.
For the noise, we're looking at some new designs. We're hoping that the new design rumble strip will be just as effective at saving people from making an error as much quieter, on the order of 10 times as quiet. And we're actually going to be installing our first full set of these style of rumble strips along 205 this summer.
So we recognize that noise is a concern, but one of the things I like to tell people is whenever you hear the sound of a rumble strip, it could be the sound of the life being saved of one of your loved ones.
Rumble strips are proven to save lives. The Oregon Department of Transportation is taking the lead in implementing the sound of safety.
I love walking. It's what I do. So who better to share some tips to help keep your walks safe? Wait for the signal. Take in the sights and smells till you get the go-ahead to cross. Use intersections to cross, but when you can't remember your training, always look left, right, left. Show you want to cross and wait for all lanes of traffic to stop and make eye contact so you know the driver sees you. Hi there. Good human. You get a treat when we get home.
How many letters? Five letters? Just think about what am I doing right now? Smile. Smile? Uh-huh. This is so easy.
Sign that doesn't have a rider on it, so we take our first test at this posted speed limit of 3,400.
Five weeks and Harley Bill's are seeing more than their share of curvy roads these days. Their job is to drive every stretch of highway in Region 1 several times.
The old limits were set back in the 1930s and 40s and were changed very little until just recently. So now our limits are taking into account newer vehicles, a little bit more aggressive driving style. And so those limits are going up.
And going up in a big way. This is Eric Leeming, a traffic devices engineer with ODOT. He's driving an ordinary car with some extraordinary tech onboard, a GPS device that records data as he maneuvers every curve in the road. Back at his office, Eric can upload the data recorded in the car and special software determines exactly the right speed for every curve, every time. Most speeds will increase by 5 to 10 miles per hour, but in some special cases, it's much higher.
The state has a deadline of 2019 from the Federal Highway Administration, but with 8,000 miles of roads to investigate and potentially thousands of signs to change, they're not wasting any time. They're getting out there right now.
Now we're going to W-113.
About 800 signs along this section.
That's a lot of signs.
It's a lot of signs. If it's a 35 mile an hour corner, you should be taking it at 35 miles an hour.
America's 3,069 county governments provide fundamental services for building healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. We are an intergovernmental partner, implementing federal and state policies at the local level, often under strict rules and funding constraints. County governments, through the National Association of Counties, engage federal policymakers on a range of issues like transportation, infrastructure, health care, public safety, and public lands management. All of these issues are vital to our nation's quality of life and our long-term prosperity. Decisions made by the White House, Congress, and federal courts have a major cascading impact on our ability to lead our communities and pursue a better future. Let's look at why federal policies matter to county government and why county government matters to America. Counties provide vital services that keep our communities thriving and secure. We own and maintain 45% of roads and four out of 10 bridges. We own more than a third of the airports and hundreds of hospitals and thousands of courthouses, jails, 911 call centers, and libraries. We play a critical role during emergencies like hurricanes, floods, and snowstorms. What if you called 911 and no one answered? What if you couldn't reach your medical facility because roads and bridges were in disrepair? Or never built? County governments are an indispensable part of the infrastructure and services that keep residents safe and connected. But with very limited revenue options under most state constitutions and laws, counties must make every penny count in order to fulfill federal and state mandates and required responsibilities. Nothing is more basic in our society than essential public facilities like schools, hospitals, airports, jails, bridges, and other infrastructure. Yet proposals have surfaced to eliminate or scale back tax-exempt municipal bonds. For over a century, municipal bonds have been the lifeblood for our nation's public infrastructure, helping finance more than $3.7 trillion in essential projects. If tax-exempt municipal bonds were eliminated or scaled back, county governments and our residents would face billions in new costs when financing vital facilities. Additionally, counties rely on MAP-21 and the Federal Highway Trust Fund to complement local transportation financing resources. With growing demands and mounting costs, we need a reliable federal partner to invest with us in our nation's economic growth and competitiveness. We need a long-term legislative solution with increased funding to ensure continued success in operating our nation's transportation system. Counties face further revenue losses each year because billions of dollars in e-commerce sales tax revenue isn't collected. The Marketplace Fairness Act would enable states and localities to collect existing, already owed taxes. It would also level the playing field between many internet retailers who don't collect sales taxes and Main Street businesses that do. County governments provide support services to federal public lands, touching 700 million annual visitors. We lead search and rescue operations, fight fires, protect the public's health, and maintain roads. Federal lands cover nearly one-third of the U.S. and impact 69% of counties. Because federal land is exempt from local property taxes, counties depend on PILT, the Payment in Lieu of Taxes Program, to provide essential services. The Secure Rural Schools Program provides assistance to rural counties and school districts affected by the decline in revenue from timber harvests on federal land. Decisions to cut or delay funding both programs undermine our ability to provide services and maintain public lands. Our intergovernmental partnerships don't end with legislation because counties also implement and comply with federal and state regulations. When considering environmental protections, we know our communities and care deeply about the environment. We need a stronger voice in shaping common sense regulations that protect communities while also promoting economic growth. This is why NACO secured significant improvements to FEMA's flood insurance program and is pushing back on the waters of the U.S.-proposed rule. Our message: Federal policies matter to county government and county government matters to America. Every level of government must work together to shape policies that improve the quality of life for all Americans. Whether it's building and maintaining infrastructure, providing essential services, or fostering economic growth, counties are on the front line serving their citizens. NACO stands ready to work with the administration and Congress to make our nation's communities healthier, safer, and more vibrant places to live and work.
Did you see Allison at lunch today? I'm gonna text her. I'm gonna text Allison.
Hey, hold up. Matt's calling me. Matt's calling me. Hey, we got the food and we're on our way right now. Hey, who's coming, Brad?
Counties matter. Counties serve nearly every American every day. Urban, suburban, and rural, counties work with states, the federal government, and other public and private partners to keep our communities healthy, vibrant, and safe. Whether you're commuting to work or shipping goods around the globe, counties matter. Counties own and maintain 45% of the nation's roads and four out of 10 bridges. And we're involved in nearly a third of public airports and transit systems. Counties matter when Americans need us the most. Counties matter because we support smart, fair, and effective criminal justice systems. We help fund police and sheriff's departments. We own and operate local jails, 911 call centers, and mental health facilities. Counties create healthy communities. We invest more than $80 billion in hospitals and medical services each year. Counties matter because we invest in the lives of residents of all ages, improving their quality of life where they live and work. Counties are the building blocks of state, regional, and national economies. We support housing, recreation, and economic development. And we do so much more. From issuing birth certificates to administering elections, counties employ more than 3.5 million people. In total, we invest more than half a trillion dollars in our residents and our communities every year. Counties provide essential services we all depend on every day. That's why counties matter. Why do counties matter? Simple. Counties provide the services we all depend on. If you're concerned about crime, get a regular flu shot, drive to work, take public transportation, or experience a natural disaster in your community, chances are you benefit from county services. That's why counties matter. With America's system of federalism, counties are a key level of government, serving the people directly. So, do you vote? Had a recent hospital stay? Know someone in a nursing home? More reasons why counties matter. There are 3,069 counties across the country, with populations big and small. Most of us live and work in one. Even the nation's capital is considered a county. These county governments ensure that the food you eat in restaurants is safe. They care for the mentally ill, run court systems, build local economies, and operate 911 emergency systems. They manage parks and recreation facilities, and the list goes on. Thing is, counties serve the American people in so many ways, keeping our communities healthy, vibrant, safe, and fiscally sound. That's why counties matter.
Yeah, I just picked her up. We should be there in twenty minutes.
Who is it? Oh, it's him. Where is he?
I know. Yeah, I know.
When a large forest fire breaks out, potentially threatening lives, homes, wildlife, and thousands of acres of forest land, the news coverage is immediate and consistent. Interviews with homeowners, firefighters, medical aid providers, and others continues nonstop until the fire is sufficiently contained. At that point, the cameras are turned off, the interviews are over, and it's on to the next event. The images of catastrophic wildfire, with its ferocity and devastating impact on the land, hold the interest and attention of the public. However, there is an equally important story occurring on that same landscape after the fire is contained, mopped up, and finally declared out that the public seldom sees. The frequency and size of these megafires on federal forest land has increased significantly over the last few decades. All too often, what is left in their wake is a vast sea of dead charred trees. Unfortunately, because of a maze of confusing and often contradictory rules and regulations, very little rehabilitation or reforestation occurs after these fires. The result of this neglect, in many cases, is as devastating as the fire itself. Here's why. Even in the hottest, severe fires, most of the dead trees remain standing, the wood not damaged by the fire, still suitable and valuable for lumber. But as the insects move in, within months, the dead and dying trees begin to deteriorate and decompose. Eventually, all of the economic value is lost. What is not removed will decay, add fuel to an even greater future fire threat, and in the process, release the greenhouse gases that the trees gathered and stored during the centuries they were alive. When all of the trees across the tens of thousands of acres burned in each of these megafires are left to rot, millions of tons of destructive greenhouse gases are released into the upper atmosphere. These are the same volatile organic compounds that have been identified as some of the most damaging elements we can put into our air. In contrast, trees harvested soon after the fire is out drive the economic engine that employs people, provides revenue for the critical restoration and reforestation, and can provide dollars for local government services such as schools, public safety, health and social services, libraries, and good roads. When the harvested trees are made into lumber for homes, construction, and furniture, the carbon remains in storage instead of going up into the atmosphere. Dead and dying timber becomes a magnet for insect infestation. These infestations can be so large that they do not end with the burned forest, but progress into the surrounding green forest, killing even more trees, which then become even more fodder for the next fire. In absence of prompt active management and reforestation, invasive brush can dominate the landscape. That brush can retard and even prohibit the growth of the new forest and compound the fuel load for a future fire. When that fire does occur, the dense brush and dead fallen trees on the ground create a firestorm, burning hotter and even more damaging to the soil than the first fire. These damaged soils can repel water, lack the nutrients and organic matter needed by seedlings, and hinder the ability of new trees to grow. While megafires can be so devastating, not all fires are bad. When the conditions are right, fire has been used for decades as an effective way to reduce fuels on the forest floor, burn back brush and dead grass to stimulate the new growth desired by wildlife, thinning out the younger, overstocked areas of our forests, and maintain the fire resiliency we seek. Controlled burning can be a powerful and useful tool, used in the right places, at the right time, by the professionals we charge with managing these forests. The desired result is to lessen the potential for the large, devastating megafires we have been experiencing these past few decades. Recovery after megafires is not only possible, but can greatly expedite the restoration and creation of all of the benefits of a healthy forest ecosystem. One fine example is Oregon's Tillamook State Forest. After repeated massive fires in the mid-twentieth century, state, county government, private companies, and even schoolchildren worked together to restore and replant over 500 square miles of burned-over landscape. As a result of those efforts, today we have prime fish and wildlife habitat for salmon, trout, elk, and owls, plus camping, hiking and biking trails, healthy growing forests that gather and store carbon, and sustainable timber harvests that supports local economies, funds schools and local governments, and supports thousands of family-wage jobs across the region. Without the vision of those state and local leaders just a few decades ago, very little, if any, of this would be possible today. Nearly every year for the past twenty years, we have watched millions of acres of our public forests burned by megafires. We've spent hundreds of millions, even billions of dollars fighting them. Yet when the fire is out, a mere fraction of the killed trees and lost value is ever recovered, with little or no effort to restore the burned landscape. What can you do? Contact your elected federal, state, and local officials. Tell them these federal lands and once treasured forests are too valuable to simply walk away. Future generations are depending upon you to take action. For more information, visit us on Facebook at Communities for Healthy Forests.
If yours is the next big idea, and you need the right place to fine-tune it, build it, launch it, if you're only your best when you can play more than you work, if inspiration comes from the outside, you belong in Curry County. The westernmost point of the land you love and the edge between familiar and uncharted. Break the pattern. Be where the airports are as close as the beaches, and industry and recreation never cease to amaze. Dock, dive, and dine in a single day, and never lose your connection. This is the threshold of the West. Live where you can do you and do it well, at the farthest point from ordinary. Curry County: Living on the Edge.
One of the things I really appreciate about our entire region is that we embrace who we are, and I think that's what unifies us. Once the timber and fishing industries collapsed, it took us a long time to get back on our feet. People didn't quite grasp the idea that once these jobs left, they weren't going to get other family-wage jobs, and it crippled us.
Things were getting really dire, so we just thought that this was an opportunity to maybe look at that public land a little differently and how it could bring more dollars into our region.
The Wild Rivers Coast is so unique because there are more wild and scenic rivers here than anywhere else in the lower forty-eight states. The scenic beauty is just amazing. There's so many different places to go, from the National Forest down to the protected ocean, and it's just a really special place.
I guess I didn't really know how special it was, though, until I moved away to Portland and came back and saw all the potential here.
We're uncrowded. We're unspoiled, and we're a little difficult to get to, but my God, once you come here, you fall in love.
We just thought if we could pull people to come into this Wild Rivers Coast and stay longer and explore a little farther into our backcountry, there was a lot of opportunities for them to experience.
I think our whole future is at stake here. This area is ready to go. We just need to give it a little kick in the butt.
I'm gonna be honest, when the Rural Tourism Studio came here, I was skeptical because I didn't see far enough ahead that we actually could collaborate regionally, and I'm pleasantly surprised. It's been amazing.
The Rural Tourism Studios was the first time we were able to come together as a region to talk about the future of our economy.
If we can have a strong tourism economy in this area, it's gonna benefit the whole community.
We have to rely on ourselves, and I think through this program, it's sort of opened our eyes to what we could do when we work together. Community leaders really focused on three areas: outdoor recreation, food and agricultural tourism, and really building community relationships.
In our area, a lot of the food that's grown all gets shipped away, and so now we're realizing that we can capture some of that local food that's grown here. The Eat Fresh and Local Action Team has hosted a series of networking events, bringing together the area growers with the area vendors, so that we could have more local food available to the visitors to our area. And now we're seeing more local food in our grocery stores, in our restaurants, and we have a new local food co-op.
We created a farm trail from Bandon to Port Orford. We did nine U-Pick farms, and it just gained traction, and people loved it.
Langloes is less than 500 people. It's very small, so we have to bring in tourists, and being on the farm trail, even though it's just beginning, has really helped do that. We really want to make it a destination for anybody. My mom and I began Dragonfly Farm just three years ago. When I found out that I could grow a seed and turn that into food, it was like, oh my gosh, why wouldn't you do this? I just quit my day job, and I just signed the paper to be an official co-owner of the farm. This is what I want to do for the rest of my life and grow with the community.
Out of the Outdoor Recreation Action Team, we came up with a series of maps that show where the best places to go recreate are. We know where we're gonna send people now, and we got a great map that shows all the best places to go see.
For us to get a mapping project done to this extent is pretty impressive. We're patting ourselves on the back. I don't know who anybody else is, but we're doing it.
From that, we decided that there was some places that needed help, so we came up with a mountain bike plan, and we also worked on designating a state scenic bikeway. The Outdoor Recreation Action Team was also looking at how we can make scuba diving better in this area, so we came up with the idea for a scuba fill station. So now people that want to come and dive in this area, they can dive for multiple days because they can get their tanks filled up again. When I started the Rural Tourism Studio, my business, South Coast Tours, was really small, and now we've grown to about five or six guides, and we're doing tours all over from Brookings all the way up to Coos Bay.
Overall, tourism is on the rise here. We've had a bang up last two years, and it's like a breath of fresh air down here.
My hope for the area is that we still keep that sense of place.
Loving a place to death is a big concern that I have, and it's a balance. We're gonna promote tourism, but we want to do it in a sustainable way. One of the biggest reasons that this area has been so successful since the Tourism Studio is the people that are involved. We have a lot of great, motivated, smart people who understand the need to promote tourism in the right way, and it's really all about the people.
When you live in a rural community like we do, from Bandon down to Brookings, and you're strapped for cash, relationships are crucial.
As a community, I think you need to come together and find out what your mission and goals are collectively. Then you can work into smaller groups, knowing that you have the backing of the whole community behind you.
As long as everybody's just super excited about it and passionate about what they're doing, and they can work together, then anything's possible.
Own what you have, and don't try to be something that you're not. It's gonna be hard. It's gonna take a long time, so roll up your sleeves and just dig in with an open mind.
What draws you to the Oregon coast? Is it the green and blue surf on a brilliant sunny day, or angry boiling waves during a raging winter storm? Do you prefer quiet coves or powerful breakers churning the sand? How about sand castles? Do you come for the rising tide or the setting sun, to marvel at whales gliding through the sea or flying in the sky? Reasons to travel the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are as far-reaching as your imagination. This is a spectacular part of Oregon that traces the entire coastline along Highway 101, guiding you to the sea and away again, to coastal towns, big and small, lowland marshes, and breathtaking overlooks. It's a long byway stretching from the mouth of the Columbia River to the California border, 363 miles in all, of some of the most unblemished, awe-inspiring seascapes you'll find anywhere. In addition to its designation as a scenic byway, Highway 101 in Oregon also has been selected as an all-American road. That means when you come here, you will experience one of only thirty-one roads considered to be the best of the best in America.
You know, when people come to the Oregon coast, they're really astonished how beautiful
You know, when people come to the Oregon coast, they're really astonished how beautiful it is. And what separates it from many of the other places in North America that are coastal is how undeveloped it is. And that's because Oregon had a very far-sided land use program back in the 1970s. We have all these wonderful state parks along the scenic byway that are perfect places to stop and enjoy nature in a relatively unspoiled way.
From the north, you begin in Astoria, the first permanent European settlement in the Pacific Northwest. It's a genuine maritime community with ship traffic from around the world seeking harbor up the Columbia. The official State Maritime Museum of Oregon sits here on the river. Beautiful Victorian houses dot the hillside. And standing 600 feet above sea level is the 125-foot Astoria Column. It features a hand-painted spiral frieze that would stretch over 500 feet if unwound. Heading south, you'll find the community of Seaside, a popular vacation spot that offers miles of public beaches, an oceanfront promenade, and a downtown core packed with restaurants, shops, and even a beach-type arcade. Cannon Beach is home to one of Oregon's most photographed natural wonders: Haystack Rock. Get your shots from the beach, or take a short drive up to Ecola State Park and look down on this 235-foot work of art. The picturesque small town is filled with art galleries, shops, and cafes. Ready for more? 10 miles to the south, this is the view from Cape Falcon. You're 700 feet above the Pacific. Here, the Pacific Coast Byway has been carved out of Nia Connie Mountain and held in place by stone walls built in the 1930s by craftsmen in the Civilian Conservation Corps. Upon descending the mountain, the highway drifts inward around Tillamook Bay to Tillamook, the unofficial dairy capital of Oregon. The verdant valley of dairy farms in this area produces 25 million gallons of milk annually. Much of that is processed into natural cheddar cheese. And near more than 800 miles of navigable waters, Tillamook is a crossroads for North Coast recreation. From here, you owe it to yourself to veer off Highway 101 to explore the Three Cape Scenic Loop. This drive places you right at the beach, beginning with Cape Mirs, home to the shortest lighthouse in Oregon. Nine lighthouses stand sentinel along Oregon's coastline. They're monuments to our maritime heritage, towering links to the past, and as much a part of the rugged Oregon coastal landscape as any offshore monolith. The Cape Mirs Lighthouse was first illuminated in 1890. Oregon's oldest lighthouse is at Cape Blanco, the westernmost point in the state. It was commissioned in 1870 to aid shipping generated by gold mining and the lumber industry. The 93-foot-high Yaquena Head Lighthouse is the tallest in Oregon. Today, its automated light continues to aid navigation at the entrance to Yaquena Bay. Many of the lighthouses are open to the public. Most happen to be excellent places to view nesting seabirds and offshore sea life. Tide pools, those rocky areas between high and low tides, support unique and diverse plants and animals. Vast amounts of colorful, otherworldly creatures wait to be discovered. But while cautiously, these organisms are tough enough to withstand the pounding surf but are utterly vulnerable to human activity. Wildlife and sea life abound on the coast.
There are six national wildlife refuges along the Oregon coast. The Pacific Coast Scenic Byway bisects these refuges or goes alongside them. It provides you the opportunity to see a wide variety of abundant wildlife, including seabirds, seals and sea lions, deer and elk, and many other wildlife.
Cape Kewanda lies at the southern end of the Three Cape Scenic Loop, near the town of Pacific City. Here, you'll find a second Haystack Rock on the byway. Hike up the dune to marvel at stunning views of sandstone formations as they turn yellow, gold, or even red in the changing sunlight. If your timing is right, you'll spot one or two of the Dory fleet sprint onto the beach after a day of fishing. How's this for a dinner setting? Restaurants along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway accommodate just about any taste. Many serve an ocean view with every meal. Up and down the coast, you'll find seafood, of course, but don't limit yourself just because you're by the water. The Central Coast begins around Lincoln City, which is one of the larger communities on the byway. It has a reputation for being windy and was recognized by Kite Lines Magazine as the best place to fly a kite in North America. It was incorporated from several small towns, and as a result, offers a sandy beach that is 7 and 1/2 miles long. A number of small state parks lie nestled along the ocean between Lincoln City and Newport. Stop, get out of your car, and take in the commanding views that are there, right next to your All-American Road. Depot Bay boasts the world's smallest navigable harbor, six square acres in all. A seawall runs the length of the downtown, so everywhere you go, you're rewarded with a dramatic view of the Pacific. It's considered Oregon's whale-watching capital, with thousands making their way past Oregon each fall and spring. Fishing and whale-watching excursions regularly set sail from this little harbor. Leaving Depot Bay, you'll soon find yourself at Cape Falweather, a basalt outcropping that looms 500 feet above the water. It was here, in 1778, British Captain James Cook first sighted the mainland of North America on the Pacific coast. A fierce storm that almost put an end to his expedition burned this rugged stretch of coastline its name. Coastal weather can change by the hour. You will find a lot of wet days, but rain can become blue sky with white clouds in an afternoon. Mist kissing the headlands burns away, or storms can last for days. Some people come for those storms. Whether you find sunbursts of happiness or cloud cover like a quilt, there's always a reason to come back.
We are on... It's 1:15 on Thursday, May 16th, and the Curry County Budget Committee is back in session. Let's see. The last item we went through was GIS operations. And that was under county assessor and tax collector. So, the next item on the list is a district attorney. That can be found on page 31. The actual money part starts on 32, runs into 33.
We did do the vote for the GIS?
I believe so.
Okay, I can remember. Next two of us.
So, on the DA's budget, I saw an increase of $7,000 in revenue, an overall increase in personnel expense of $26,000. But didn't really see any major increases on materials or supplies. I think he just carried most of that back over. And so, I move that we approve the district attorney's budget as prepared.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
There is...
Sorry.
There is one slight decrease in his budget, and that is the... Oh, gosh, where is it? It's the transfers to... Yes, transfers to the DSAR grant and transfers to the CAMI grant. And we no longer... Because CAMI grants, and that program's ending, doesn't have that transfer. So, I'm looking to see where it is.
Is that on one of his other budgets?
I think so.
Well, we can vote.
I mean, that was the only difference, is that...
Actually, the DSAR is on line number 21 on page 32.
Yep. Okay, yeah. So, if you look on line 20, the $8,000 child advocacy is zero. But the DSAR, what we discussed, because of increasing payroll costs, the DSAR grant only pays for the original one. So, that's why that one increased, and that's why line 20 is decreased.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Move on to the next item. This is the county clerk recording, beginning on page 34. We don't really see the data sets until page 35. And this is where I believe I am... Got a little problem here. One second. Tabbed up.
There's really not much change.
I'm missing page 36. There you go. See, I have two of them. So, I saw an $18,800 decrease overall in revenue and an increase in $23,800. We'll call it $24,000 in personnel expense. Thanks, Brad. I don't see anything unreasonable in the materials and supplies. And so, I would make a motion to adopt the county clerk recording department as prepared.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have community development and planning. This is on page 38. And so, Julie, this was the budget that you presented, correct?
One of them, yes.
And so, overall, there's a $153,000 increase from the general fund for this particular department. The previous year was at $77,000 from the GF. It seems like a big number, but based on the presentation that Julie provided, I anticipate that we'll see some of these revenues pick back up as more services are provided.
Especially when we have someone down there now that goes in the drawers and gets the applications and checks out and actually follows through deposits.
And they're answering the phone, and returning phone calls.
There you go.
So, that was in Julie's little handout.
We just been able to attract some very qualified people.
The only question I had on that one was the scanning cost at $35,000. I recall Julie talking to us about how, you know, that information needed to be scanned in. My question was, is it really gonna be $35,000? Is that too much? Is that too little? Is that the right amount?
I think Ms. Melzer had it done. They did it in Josephine County?
Yeah, we did it in Josephine County, and this was... So, I figured about half because we're a much smaller county. So, I figured it was about... would be about $35,000.
Okay, that was the only question I really had. I would make a motion to approve the community development, planning department budget as prepared.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I have one question, Ms. Melzer. Non-capital equipment is $2,000. What was that earmarked for, do you know?
Um, what line are you on?
On page 39, line 14. There was none previous to the last three years, and now, we've got a $2,000 non-capital equipment in the budget.
I am... I do not know... Do you remember, Louise?
Let me look and see if there's a note on the worksheet.
Uh, the planning director...
If you can't remember, we'll have to take it off. It's a penalty.
Yeah, the planning director actually prepared the budget. I'm thinking it might be for a desk.
Not these days.
Oh, is it?
You can get a press board desk for about $400, and you're gonna get exactly what you paid for. It's gonna flop over in six months. If you're gonna get a decent HON desk, H-O-N, then you're gonna be paying about $800 to $1,200 for just a regular-sized desk.
I mean, the difference in this budget is, you know, proposal as opposed to the one you spoke about earlier, there's not a lot of lines here that you can move things around on. So, if they were planning for a new desk or something, I don't see a lot of other places you could take it from.
It says, "New planner, computer, and replacement printer."
Okay. Satisfied. Call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That's community development and planning. Next, we're on... I love these when they go this smooth. Next, we're on to the county surveyor. I saw a $20,000 increase in our personnel costs, and I saw the motor pool listed on there for $2,000. But given that there's gonna be some traveling, I didn't see that as out of line. So, I didn't think anything stood out to me. So, I would make a motion to approve the county surveyor department as prepared.
I'll second that.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Drum roll, please, county sheriff. Oh, they're here. All right, starting on page 45. So, I marked down a few changes that are recommendations. And so, I will make the following motion. Give me a moment to run through the numbers, and then we'll get to that process. So, on page 45, line item 25. They had a $7,000 request in. I'm recommending we drop that to $6,000 for a $1,000 reduction. On page 46, line item 16. Supplies, non-capital equipment, it was $12,500 last year. They asked for $15,000 this year. I'm recommending we keep it at $12,500. 16. On line number 17, supplies, non-capital law equipment. Last year was $22,000. This year is $27,500. I'm recommending we keep it at last year's number of $22,000. And that is it for the...
What about line...
Criminal, civil criminal.
What about line 18? That went up $5,000. Other materials and services?
So, there were some lines that I left intact because I wanted the sheriff's department to have the ability to use the category.
A little bit of leeway?
Correct, because I'm recognizing that we're asking for a total of $9,000 in reductions in the civil criminal in materials and services. But again, it's that whole complex issue of this year, we're paying for employees. We can't pay for all the materials and services as well. But leave them enough money that I think is adequate to cover the cost of supplying new officers, et cetera.
I'm looking at Captain. I know that they put in budgets because they're hiring new officers, so they need to do the equipment for them. And that's why I think those increases are, so...
So, hold on a second, Captain. I just wanna make sure we process it through committee first, and then we'll ask if you're gonna come up and do a response.
Yes, I will.
I mean, the only questions I have on this are, I mean, some of these things are going to be fluid because we don't have those deputies yet, so we've already budgeted in some things. So, I think you're already gonna get some leeway on a lot of this, if I'm not mistaken. So, you know, this isn't a hard-line budget number because you've, like I say, you're going to be hiring deputies that aren't hired yet. So, those numbers could drop. Hopefully, they would drop like you were careful this year, and you didn't use as much of the road fund as you were budgeted to use.
Right, and just so you're aware, we're careful with our budget every year.
Right.
So...
That's what I had.
Okay. Anything else from committee members?
You know, I'd like to take just a few minutes of your time right now and just share with you a professional experience I had that relates to really elected officials and law enforcement legends. The incident I'm gonna refer to is an incident that happened February 25th, 2010 in Fresno. It was an incident where the sheriff's part of a search and warrant, no big deal. It's just a kind of a standard case like any other. And during the service of the warrant, the subject was not compliant, and shots were fired. Deputy Joe, Joel Wiedermeyer, was killed. And he was shot in the doorway of the search warrant service. I responded to that. And there was a sustained gunfight with a suspect for a long period of time. And other officers were wounded during this exchange. And about 45 minutes into the incident, a small police department, Meadley Police Department nearby, they only had like 10 or 12 officers on their agency. They sent an officer, Javier Baez, and he responded. And shortly after he arrived, he was also struck with gunfire and killed. Very near, was that? I share this tragedy with you because that wasn't the first one I've had. It wouldn't be the last one I've had. But what happened afterward is what I wanna really make a point of emphasis on. And it's what happens all the time. Our elected officials and our department heads and police chiefs and sheriffs, they're outraged, and they get together and they have a debriefing. And some of us involved in the incident were part of the debriefing. And they sit and they look at their numbers, and they sit and they look at their budget, and they say, "My God, how did this happen?" And literally, within a few weeks, officers had enlisted helmets, enlisted shields, or magazines, or a commission, or going to trainings we had never gone to before, but we had asked to go to. They changed policy, they changed procedures. They changed policy, they changed procedures. And everything changed after that incident. It was reactive. As we look at the sheriff's department ledger, I've talked with the sheriff, I've gone on ride-alongs. Actually gone out and interviewed drug users in our community to get their input out of the sheriff's office.
Here locally.
Here locally, thank you. And this is, this is an agency that is struggling right now to be safe. Not because, not because of any incompetence, but because of budget issues. And there are standards in the industry that are being violated. Again, not because of any incompetence, but because they can't do it with what they have. When I say violations of the industry, what I mean is you should never go in a room and clear a room by yourself. They have to do that. When you contact somebody who should be a cover element present, they can't do that. When you respond to a critical incident, you should be calling your units and staging ahead of the incident so you're going together. Oftentimes, they're by themselves. And where I came from, officers would be disciplined for some of those things. And here, our deputy sheriffs are so willing to meet the needs of the community that they're doing, they're doing this. And I realize we're going kind of line by line. We're trying to cut as much out of the budgets as we can. And I know, you know, if we don't cut the sheriff's department's budget, we cut everybody else's budget, we lose the perception. But here's the reality. What's a deputy's life worth? And we need to do everything that we possibly can to make sure that they have every tool and resource they need. We have an obligation to make sure they have the training, the equipment, and the staffing levels to be safe. Otherwise, we're going to lose one. That's my professional opinion.
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
So, just another quick cap on this. You know, the personnel costs are up 19.3%. And the recommendations that I provided in my motion are a 1.4% decrease in Materials and Services. Pretty nominal.
Ken, can I, can I get the number again? It's the
Sorry.
1,000
Which one?
From the front line, 25 on page 45. It's the reduction of 1,000.
Correct.
Line 16, reduce back to 12.5? On photos-
Yes, reduce back to 12.5.
And line 17, reduce to 22?
Correct.
And I think that Commissioner Gold said line 18 back to 10. Is that part of the suggestion or not?
No, my response to that was is I purposely left a lot of other line items intact because it's not the line item. It's the category. That gives the sheriff's office the opportunity to use all the money in the category as they see fit. Really doesn't matter what a single line says.
Okay.
What matters is the end category. So, their spending power would reduce from 640,000 down to 631,000, essentially.
Mister-
Sir.
I think that took courage right there and I appreciate that. Quickly, our number one job is public safety. You look around the country right now. Your microphone. Excuse me. You look around the country right now, there's a real shortage of recruitable officers at all levels for law enforcement. And as our number one job is public safety, and I've communicated this publicly before, that is a huge concern that I think we share. At the overall point of the budget here with the trouble of raising those revenues that you wisely referenced Tuesday, I think, and I've also said in the past, we can't run the county on property taxes alone. And we have a little bit of government money coming in. We don't know how long that's going to be reliable. To set our law enforcement up for the best possible capacity to recruit and compete, while I agree with you that it's a 1% to 2%, it is, it is a wise move. But where does it leave us in that, in that ability to, to compete with other law enforcement agencies? You heard me say earlier today, 5% across the board. I didn't get much movement on that, but I was, I was reflective of what your concerns are and how we make this happen. So, I have 18 months to go. I'm going to be pushing real hard for additional revenue. We lost a lot of money the last two years, four or 500,000. So, we've got to try and make that up every way we possibly can.
If I could respond.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Not really an argument, and I've always been a supporter of law enforcement and will be-
I know you have.
Until I'm gone, so it's certainly not that angle. But I think we speak volumes. That 19.8% increase in personnel cost speaks volumes about what this committee is saying about law enforcement. We want to give them enough proceeds to be able to, or enough revenue really, to hire the right people and sustain that employment. But we can't do everything in one year. We just, we have to be cognizant of if we're going to invest in our employees this year and 19.8, that's a big increase. We've got to take a look at the other stuff. If we can try to keep our materials and supplies in line, and there's, there's a slight increase in some of these columns. Overall, it's a decrease. But I think it's fair. I think it's equitable. I don't want any officer to be unsafe. But I, we've got to do this in stages. I don't think that we can just, you know, there's a lot of money on the table. Last time we talked about this, we were up to a $1.2 million road fund contribution, not what was in here earlier. And we still don't know what that end number is going to be. And so, yes, I'm doing my job and attempting to be conservative. However, I'm just one vote. There are six members on the committee and I'm willing to accept whatever the committee decides to do.
And to comment on this, first of all, I absolutely appreciate everything that Ken's learned because I'm learning a ton from it. He's obviously very, very knowledgeable about, about this budget and what we're doing. And I appreciate that. The sheriff's not going to be able to hire the people and implement some of the things that are in the budget immediately. It's going to take a period of time. And perhaps that 1% or whatever it is is going to be absorbed over that period of time. And my, my position is if we're going to have a sheriff's office, we have a short-term problem and we have a long-term problem. A long-term problem, that's a different discussion, I think. As you brought up, we need to create some additional revenue for the county. But the short-term problem is what's going to happen this coming year with our sheriff's department. And if we're going to have a sheriff's department, they need to be adequately trained, adequately equipped, and adequately staffed to be safe. And it's my opinion that this budget is bare bones.
I have just one quick question. On our current budget cycle that we're on now, sheriff's department was budgeted 481,260. And that was for patrol. How much of that did we, have we used?
I can only do an estimate of that.
Roughly, exactly.
And I, I think Sheriff and I talked about it. By the end of the year, we'll probably be using somewhere in between 250 and 300,000 of that.
So, right there is 180 to 200,000 that he could have used that he didn't. I mean, that's what we're just, I think we're talking about is the floating of this. You know, we're looking at, what, $7,000 coming out of the budget?
9,000.
9,000.
1.4% decrease.
So, I can support that.
My comment, yeah.
I can support that, for now.
I have a comment, but my battery's dead, so.
You guys are talking too much.
More batteries now.
Oh, sorry.
Trying to cut me off.
Are there any left?
No.
We need more batteries.
While he's doing that, I'm speaking of safety. The end of this table is not locked up and it could, it's not, it's not-
If you look under the latches, right in the middle, it didn't, it didn't come together.
I'm just thankful that Brad's sitting next to me because he's got really long legs.
You could fall on his kneecap.
He's got like only a half inch under the table, so.
You'll be okay.
I'm good. Maybe it won't lock.
No, we're not budgeting for a new table.
Well, they should have put duct tape on there.
Okay, so it's, it's, okay, I see.
I'm gonna be okay.
Put in some kind of clamp, hold it. Okay. It was making me nervous.
My comments are probably just more clarification. So, you were saying we were from 15 to 12.5. 15 to 12.5, 27 to 22, but you're leaving the others in place at 15. And are they able, if they run over on the other two, are they able to use any of that 15?
Yeah, the line items don't matter. The only thing they have to do is not overspend the 640,000, 322, which if the $9,000 were taken into account, that would be 631,322. They can't overspend that amount. Line items really don't matter.
See, I'm ex-law enforcement, everybody knows. And I'm probably as pro-law enforcement as anybody. And I don't think what he's proposing is unrealistic from hearing that we haven't filled some positions yet and haven't used some. But if he runs over on the other two, he still has that 15,000 to rely on. And I agree with him. We're trying to get personnel back up to speed in all departments. So, I would support Ken in this.
Okay, so there was a motion and there was a second? Was there a second?
I second. Will second. Excuse me.
Thank you, Sheriff. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, we don't get to defend our budget and our numbers there at all?
So, if we did that for every department, Captain, we would be here until the end of May.
But I thought that's the whole point of, well, okay. I, I want to point one thing out, though. You used the number that we have, 640,000 in Materials and Services. And if technically, I guess you're correct, except for from line 20, we have no control over that money. Automatically comes out of our budget.
Correct.
When you go up, property insurance, $50,000, general liability insurance, property insurance, the vehicle insurances, we have no control over those.
Yes.
So, when you take all of those numbers out of our budget, we don't have 640,000. I guess what I, if given the opportunity, what I, what I would have told you is, all right, I've only been with this sheriff's office for four and a half years. I've only been in the position of captain for four years, or, excuse me, for less than a year. But the, the thing is, is, you know, yeah, $9,000 doesn't sound like a lot out of this particular budget. But when I have an armory that has 2,500 practice rounds and our, our deputy sheriffs qualify once a year instead of the industry standard is four, and I, and I come from a place where, where you qualify every quarter and you're required to qualify every quarter with your firearm. When we add stuff into our budget to try and, over the years, these budget, this budget has been cut so drastically that not only did we not have the personnel, which yes, that's, that's being, that's being worked on, but when you have personnel and you can't train them, you can't supply them, and you can't train them, and you can't have them do the things that they do. Because everything's been cut so far, you know, yeah, $9,000, you can only cut so many pencils and pens and then you start cutting people. We all get that. But like I said, there's a good portion of that budget that we do not have control out of that 640,000. It's not available to, for us to adjust if we overspend in one, one line item. We can take it out of those because if we start taking the $40,000 and the $67,000 out of occupancy and if we start running into that, they're going to take it anyways. All right, so we can't use that money to adjust the rest of it. I guess that's what I want to tell you.
And I appreciate your passion, Captain. And I've always been a law enforcement supporter, as I said earlier, and I will do that for the remainder of my life. We're making investments the best that we can do. If you don't have the money, you don't have the money. There, we just can't keep emptying out the road funds. That's not the answer here. We're building up over time. This is a, this is probably the biggest movement towards funding the sheriff's office in quite some time. And we should do this over a period of years, not all at once. If you grow too fast, that has its own consequences attached to it. Great, we got four new positions, but you know, the backside of that is you've got four new people to train. And four new trainees is, you know, that's a little tough to manage those. And they're not all going to come on July 1st. That's going to get spread out over time. The tough part is making a budget that will work for everybody and recognize where our biggest drops are. And our biggest drops in the county, in my opinion, have been personnel. We have not taken care of our people. This is the right direction. We're taking care of our people, but we can't do increase everywhere. And we're not just looking at the sheriff's department. Every department. I've spent seven hours last night. I did not go to bed till 2:00 AM going through this, checking, double checking, triple checking. So, I appreciate your passion. I truly, truly do. And if the county had the money, I'd be the first one saying, "Give the sheriff's office more money."
So, the only comment I want to make is I don't have the issue. I don't really have the issue about the cuts. Just we need to be able to make our own cuts where we feel they need to be met. So, if you give us the bottom line of how much needs to be cut out of our budget, we'll just go out of certain lines, not out of the lines that are, that you feel that may need to be cut. And we know why we put money in those budgets. So, if you say, "Hey, we need to take $9,000," we'll, we'll find a place to cut that. So, I'm just saying, but it won't be out of the lines that you say, "Hey, you're going to take $1,000 out of that line. You're going to take 12,000 out of that line," or whatever.
And thank you, Sheriff.
And I appreciate everything you've done and I agree with you. I can't be more happier with, with, you know, the support we have this year and it's monumental. So, if you say we need to take $9,000 out, we'll figure out where to cut it.
Thank you.
Do you have any suggestions what we could cut now, other than what we took out?
Well, I haven't really seen, basically, I've just heard some of the lines. We just have to go back and look at it and we'll figure it out.
I don't want to cut anymore. That nine is a key.
No, no, I'm saying if there's other lines that he feels that they could cut and put this other back in, we're not too late or we did another, do another motion to put it back in? We are?
Well-
No, I, you know, there, again, our process here, and, and we do have Commissioner Gold and Commissioner Pash that have feedback as well. But our, our goal here was when we started this, we wanted to hear what all the departments had to say, the whole county. And so, we did that Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. And now, we're in the, you know, process of going through these and deciding or recommending what should happen and what should not happen. And we're not done yet. You know, there's, there's a, there's a long ways to go. We are on tab number nine. We got 31 tabs. At the end of the process, we still got to finalize final numbers tomorrow. If in fact, we find that there's more money on the table than they thought, than we thought there was going to be, we'll probably revisit some of this, which is why I'm really recommending we don't get hyped up about this today.
Well, I'm not getting hyped up.
Let us get through a process, see numbers, and then tomorrow, before we take a final, if, if we can make some last minute adjustments, then that's the time to do that.
And, and I understand where you're coming from on, you know, when, when, because our, our budget is adopted in by category. You have your, you know, Materials and Services and you have your Personnel Cost. And you don't mix those and it's bottom line on each end. So, if I overspend in line 12, then I can make up for it by spending less than 19. I totally get that. So, I'm okay. I just wanted you guys to understand that over the year, these, this budget has been pared down to, that's why stuff's added back in. That's why, that's why stuff was added, to take care of the things that we need to take care of, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Commissioner Pash had his hand up first and then Commissioner Gold.
Well, I just, my comment was this. I mean, you know, if we, if we end up coming up short in here, I'm, I'm sure that the sheriff's department understands that they can come to this commission if it's viable to the protection of the citizens of this county and we do a supplemental budget. I mean, if there's an issue there, I, I would hope that the sheriff's department knows that our door is open, so. Anyway, that was my comment.
Thank you, sir.
The captain showed a total understanding of what I was going to clarify, so I'm done.
Thank you.
About the category versus the line items.
Okay. So, did we have a motion? Well, I did a motion.
We've already voted.
Already voted, already voted. That's right.
Okay, but to vote to actually approve the whole department would be with the May 13th changes, the record changes this morning, and this current adjustment.
And so, I, I need just a second here because we have Sheriff's Civil Criminal Patrol and then Search and Rescue is moved.
Is that the jail?
Marine was moved, Forest Patrol was moved. So we have the Harbor Substation. And I'm just going in order. I think that's just the easiest way to do it. And so, this is on page fifty, this is the Harbor Substation Department. And there was zero down for copying and printing, and there was seventeen fifty put in. And I put seven hundred and fifty as a recommendation, and I left everything else intact. And so I'll put that in form of a motion. I would make a motion that we, uh, modify the copying and printing from seventeen fifty to seven fifty. And again, uh, because there was no prior year cost on those.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No on that one. Only opposed.
Then we have the jail.
Five to one.
And on the jail, we had a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollar increase in revenues, which is good, that's a good number. Uh, increase in personnel costs, obviously. That's a little, right around, uh, three hundred thousand. And when I was looking at professional services, I'd made some notes on general and, uh, professional services general on thirty-two and thirty-three, but I think we should leave those numbers intact, because there's no telling how that's gonna shake out on, uh, medical care. Now I need a piece of paper, yeah, sorry. On line number twelve, which is janitorial, it was seven thousand, and they wanted to go to eight. And I'd like to keep that at seven. And on Supplies Medical, they were at twenty-five thousand. Do we have the current budget up to see the year-to-date usage on line item number thirteen, page fifty-two?
Yeah. Yeah, that's a, that's a hard one.
What number, what, oh, I'm sorry.
Medical.
Page fifty-two, line item thirteen.
Medical on, if I could comment on this, medical, uh, over there is something that we gotta deal with at a state level.
Yes, sir.
As you know, because it's a mess. It's a three-dollar bill one month and a three-thousand-dollar bill the next week.
It's beyond disheartening.
So six oh five, looks like you guys are currently at twenty-one thousand. Twenty-five thousand dollar budget and a balance available of three thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars and forty-seven cents. And, uh, that's through the end of April? So we still have May, June left, and, uh, we'll get to that line again, six oh five. Looks like your usage is about twelve hundred a month.
So the April was eleven hundred, so.
So that'd be another twenty-four hundred. So, um, I think the twenty-five thousand is good. I think they're gonna probably end the year there unless there's some surprise thing. They're only asking for three thousand dollars, and I'm only asking to remove the three thousand dollars. And then I'll go to the next line item. On the, uh, sixteen, Supplies Non-Capital Equipment. Uh, so that's six ten. Where's that? So where's our, um, year-to-date usage on that?
Of which one?
Um, line sixteen.
Line sixteen.
Uh, count number six ten.
Ninety-five hundred on there, yeah.
Six, six, ten. So we're six thirty-three overspent, and we have still two months left, so we're good there. That's fine. And then the next line item down is seventeen, which is six ten dash one zero. Sixteen dash one zero, uh, budget of five thousand, eighteen ten spent, balance available of thirty-one eighty-nine.
And I'd, I'd like to make a quick comment. Um, I know that the, a lot of times, um, the sheriff looks at this at the end of the year, inventories and, uh, supplies at the end of the year. So he kinda makes sure that he has the money to, to do this before he spends it. He just makes sure that he doesn't have, over on the medicals and stuff like that before he, um, actually spends it. So basically, annually does this at the end of the year, so it's probably why there's, um, the spending looks like that right now.
Okay. I mean, especially on this, uh, excuse me, on this budget, we've, um, we've got some overages on the medical side, on the hospital side. We have cut all spending and only what is absolutely necessary until the year trying to come in. Out our bottom line number. Okay.
That's kind of what I was saying.
Yeah. And then line number twenty, uh, which is six fifty-nine. So that was a thousand dollar budget. There's five fifty-four left in there, and this year it's an increase from a thousand to twenty-five hundred.
And it's the same reason.
What's that?
It's the same reason, it's, the underspending is because of trying to, uh, take care of the overspending, the things they can't control, like the medicine and the doctors and things like that.
So, um, let me go back and take a look at my numbers here. So we're leaving those alone. So I'd like to make the following motion. Uh, this is the, uh, General Fund Sheriff Jail Department. So the motion I'm making is that we reduce line twelve, um, which is Supplies Janitorial from eight thousand to seven thousand, matching last year. Drop line thirteen, which is Supplies Medical, from twenty-eight thousand to twenty-five thousand. And Supplies Non-Capital Law Equipment from eighty-five hundred to six thousand, not down to last year's, there's still more in there. Um, just not the same amount. And I'll scratch that one. So that is a difference of one thousand, four thousand, and twenty-five, sixty-five hundred dollars.
So can, can you tell me the line items again? Janitorial?
Yes, give me a second, please.
Twelve was janitorial from eight to seven?
Yes, sir.
Thirteen was medical from twenty-five, or I'm sorry, from twenty-eight to twenty-five?
Yes, sir.
And number seventeen, non-capital law equipment from, uh, eighty-five hundred to six?
Yes, sir. And that's it for a total of sixty-five hundred, which is a one point one seven reduction. And again, I booked, I purposely, I had a lot more marked on here, by the way, if anybody wants to look at my sheet. Um, but I scratched those off. So again, this gives the sheriff's office that flexibility to move along in those cost areas. And again, I, I do understand we have those fixed costs for liability insurance and, uh, administrative fees. So that is my motion.
I'm gonna second that for discussion. And the discussion part I have is the medical costs. Those are so hard to predict. And that, that's the hard part about this budget to me.
Okay.
I'm, thank you. I'm just concerned the message is sent to the sheriff's department throughout the state, to the citizens. Uh, people won't understand a one percent. They'll just, they'll just hear cuts on law enforcement, and I'm not being unfair to you. I love the direction you're going and the wisdom you have here. I'm just, if it wasn't for the unknown, I would be in favor. Otherwise, I'm opposed, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you.
Aren't you leaving the door open, though, to come back? Commissioner Pash said we could do a supplemental. If we run into a problem, obviously, we're gonna be back anyway.
Yes.
So I, I'm not sure as, if I was on the other side, that I would be concerned about a one percent as a citizen. If I knew, and of course, I'm, we only know here that the door's open to come back, so. But I also agree that we're trying to right this ship in one year with their employees and stuff. And we can't fix it all at once. And from my past experiences, that the sheriff's getting a pretty good budget out of this committee. And sure, he'd, we'd like to give him more, but also the door's open to come back. So I'm kinda on the fence on this one, as far as voting, but I think we have to consider that the medical is the gorilla in the closet, there's no doubt about it. And but we, and if he doesn't have a problem coming back, if he needs it, I'm, I'm not so sure that this is a bad message when we're trying to do an overhaul, other than if she come out and just said, oh, we're gonna, what I've seen in some budgets, we're gonna cut five percent off everybody. And I, I think this is a pretty good process. That's my opinion.
I think I made my position very clear. I don't think we should cut anything. I think it's, I think it's about as bare bones as you can get. But the contingency on that is, you know, it's a one percent cut, and if the door is open for the sheriff to come back, if those items are, are a necessity, then, uh, as long as that door is open and we, and we agree to that, then, uh, one percent is understandable.
Mr. Chair, I'll have a better feel, too, after we get through the rest of these, to see if we're gonna.
I agree, and that's, that's.
Tackle, 'cause I, I, so far, we haven't, and, thank you.
I think that's the important part, is we really need to get through all of these, because if there is more money available on the table, we can shift some of those funds back to the sheriff's department tomorrow.
Couldn't have said it better.
That's, that's, you know, but I wanna reference some other things real quick before we finalize this, and that is, on this particular one, so on the jail, there's a twenty percent overall increase in personnel expense. And asking for a, uh, I didn't write it down, a one point something, one point one, I think, uh, reduction. One point one percent reduction.
And that's in materials and services, so.
Yeah, with, but the, but the personnel, I mean, with the understanding that they're currently, there's a minimum staffing of two deputies at night. Two deputies working at jail all night. In a jail facility that is aging and is in distress, and if one of those criminals takes advantage of a flaw in the facility and attacks a deputy, there's two of them working. They're gonna call for help at four in the morning. Problem is, it's gonna be, there's nobody working at four in the morning. So they gotta call guys at home to come out from their house, to go to the jail, to help the two deputies that are in distress. And that is, in today's law enforcement, that's crazy. And it's dangerous. And that's why I'm just, I, and I, I, I appreciate the process, and, and I appreciate the method in which this is taking place, and, and I know that, and I, and I know that everybody, that's a concern of everybody's, but, but I just, they're behind and they're catching up. And, and that process needs to be faster, in my opinion. I think they're, they're so far behind.
Well, the good news is we have four years, and this is just year one. Commissioner Boyce.
No, that's all, I'm sorry, I was just agreeing with your, thank you.
Um, so I'm gonna restate my motion, 'cause it's been a few minutes. So, uh, we are on the Sheriff Jail Department budget, and I move that we modify line item number twelve from eight thousand down to seven thousand, which is a one thousand dollar reduction. That we modify line thirteen, Supply Medical, from twenty-eight thousand down to twenty-five thousand, and that we reduce line item seventeen, which is eighty-five hundred, down to six thousand, for a total reduction of six thousand five hundred dollars, one point one seven percent.
And I already said and did that.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, with the door being open to come back if needed.
I oppose, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Pash?
I say yeah.
Yes, sir. That is the, um, let me catch up here for a minute. That's the jail. Sheriff Communications, which is on page fifty-three. And the only item I had marked on here was on page fifty-four. Line item eight, Supplies Non-Cap Furniture was at three thousand. Uh, they proposed five thousand. I'm recommending three thousand for a two thousand dollar reduction. That's it on that budget.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
What's that for? Specific contenders overall?
It says furniture, sir, uh, I'm sorry, non-cap.
Non-cap.
Non-cap furniture and equipment. Chairs.
Chairs. I mean, are the chairs adequate for the, is it, I assume this for the dispatch?
It could be, um, equipment or furniture, so it could be computers, I don't know with that.
And I don't know, last time you guys went into the dispatch center, um, but, you know, sometimes there's only one dispatcher working that's taking nine-one-one calls, dispatching officers, monitoring the activity in the jail, et cetera. Sometimes she's gotta go to the bathroom, she can't even go.
I will say I was in there a month or so ago, and this, this is one that I would, after seeing the condition of some of the things in there, um, this is one I'd recommend leaving the extra two thousand in on. Um, there are some upgrades that are needed in there, and I would be, I would prefer we be proactive for this one.
That's my feelings.
And I just have one comment. Uh, possibly there could be some furniture or something here in the county that's not being used, that we could use over there.
It's not necessarily furniture.
Oh.
It could be computers or printers or whatever.
Okay, well.
That is needed in that department. I, I can't, we can't identify exactly what it is, it's not necessarily chairs.
Or even computers, we're gonna be getting new ones here pretty soon.
You will, and they're completely usable. They've got probably a three-year life left on them.
Is that the only thing you have out of that one?
That is the only thing that I earmarked on that one, so.
Can I make a motion to leave that alone, then?
You certainly could. I can withdraw my motion.
I'll second that.
You gotta state what it is, though.
To?
So we don't need a motion?
To leave it alone.
To leave it alone?
Basically, we buzzer, budget is there.
Well, his motion was to.
Prove the budget as prepared.
To move it down, right?
Not to leave it as prepared, leave it as written.
Thanks.
So I'll, we have a motion on the table to, uh, leave Communications as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alrighty. Next, we have a.
So, um, you actually have only basically approved, uh, nine-one-one. Do you wanna approve all of those sheriff departments as adjusted on the May thirteenth changes? The changes to, that you did this morning to the electeds, and the adjustments that you just approved?
I need to get to the tab before you.
It's all Civil Criminal Patrol, Substation, Jail, and nine-one-one, all four.
Was that in that?
What line is that?
Okay, so you approved the changes, but you didn't approve the budget, and the budget had other changes in it. So for Sheriff's Bu, um, Patrol Budget, you approved the eighty-five hundred dollar reduction, but you didn't approve the May thirteenth changes and the changes that you did this morning. So you said you're gonna do that all at once. So all the sheriff's departments, Sheriff's Civil Criminal Patrol, Harbor Substation, Jail, and Communications, all at once, and as adjusted.
Right.
Approve those budgets.
The question I was asking is, where is the sheriff's commu, actually, the nine-one-one, is that Communications altogether?
Yes, it's not. So were you talking about?
So were you talking about personnel costs?
Yeah, the changes, the May 13th changes were personnel changes.
Okay.
So we would basically be approving the sheriff's office budget with the provisions we've made?
With the, yeah, with the changes you've made so far.
So, put a motion on the table relative to the changes that were submitted the previous day, I believe that was on Tuesday?
Well, they were, they were, some, they were done on May 13th, which was Monday.
Okay.
And then you did one earlier this morning on the elected part, and a couple of changes that you just did.
Right.
The 6,500 and the 8,500.
So in addition to the items, my motion is, in addition to the items that we've already processed here in the last 20 minutes or so, uh, we would also incorporate the changes that we've done Monday and this morning earlier.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yay.
Moving on to juvenile. But before we do that...
No.
No, we did not.
He's restricted.
It's in another, it's in, it's been moved, that's why, we're just going in order. So, uh, before we get to juvenile, I think it's time for a little comfort environmental break. Catches up to us, so, uh, let's stand in recess until 2:25. It's not quite 15 minutes, but sufficient.
One of the things I really appreciate about our entire region is that we embrace who we are, and I think that's what unifies us. Once the timber and fishing industries collapsed, it took us a long time to get back on our feet. People didn't quite grasp the idea that once these jobs left, they weren't going to get other family wage jobs. And it crippled us.
Things were getting really dire, so we just thought that this was an opportunity to maybe look at that public land a little differently, and how it could bring more dollars into our region.
The Wild Rivers Coast is so unique, because there are more wild and scenic rivers here than anywhere else in the lower 48 states. The scenic beauty is just amazing. There's so many different places to go, from the national forests down to the protected ocean, and it's just a really special place.
I guess I didn't really know how special it was, though, until I moved away to Portland and came back and saw all the potential here.
We're uncrowded, we're unspoiled, and we're a little difficult to get to, but my God, once you come here, you fall in love.
We just thought if we could pull people to come into this Wild Rivers Coast and stay longer, and explore a little farther into our backcountry, there was a lot of opportunities for them to experience.
I think our whole future is at stake here. This area is ready to go, we just need to give it a little kick in the butt.
I'm gonna be honest, when the Rural Tourism Studio came here, I was skeptical, because I didn't see far enough ahead that we actually could collaborate regionally. And I'm pleasantly surprised, it's been amazing.
The Rural Tourism Studios was the first time we were able to come together as a region to talk about the future of our economy.
If we can have a strong tourism economy in this area, it's gonna benefit the whole community.
We have to rely on ourselves, and I think through this program, it's sort of opened our eyes to what we could do when we work together. Community leaders really focused on three areas. Outdoor recreation, food and agricultural tourism, and really building community relationships.
In our area, a lot of the food that's grown all gets shipped away. And so now, we're realizing that we can capture some of that local food that's grown here. The Eat Fresh and Local Action Team has hosted a series of networking events, bringing together the area growers with the area vendors, so that we could have more local food available to the visitors to our area. And now we're seeing more local food in our grocery stores, in our restaurants, and we have a new local food co-op.
We created a farm trail from Bandon to Port Orford. We did nine U-Pic farms, and it just gained traction, and people loved it.
Langloes is less than 500 people, it's very small. So, we have to bring in tourists, and being on the farm trail, even though it's just beginning, has really helped do that. We really wanna make it a destination for anybody. My mom and I began Dragonfly Farm just three years ago. When I found out that I could grow a seed and turn that into food, it was like, oh my gosh, why wouldn't you do this? I just quit my, my day job, and I just signed the paper to be an official co-owner of the farm. This is what I wanna do for the rest of my life, and grow with the community.
Out of the Outdoor Recreation Action Team, we came up with a series of maps that show where the best places to go recreate are. We know where we're gonna send people now, and we got a great map that shows all the best places to go see.
For us to get a mapping project done to this extent is pretty impressive. We're patting ourselves on the back. I don't know anybody else's, but we're doing it.
From that, we decided that there was some places that needed help, so we came up with a mountain bike plan. And we also worked on designating a state scenic bikeway. The Outdoor Recreation Action Team was also looking at how we can make scuba diving better in this area. So we came up with the idea for a scuba fill station. So now people that wanna come and dive in this area, they can dive for multiple days, because they can get their tanks filled up again. When I started the Rural Tourism Studio, my business, South Coast Tours, was really small. And now we've grown to about five or six guides, and we're doing tours all over from Brookings all the way up to Coos Bay.
Overall, tourism is on the rise here. We've had a bang up last two years, and it's like a breath of fresh air down here.
My hope for the area is that we still keep that sense of place.
Loving a place to death is a big concern that I have, and it's a balance. We're gonna promote tourism, but we wanna do it in a sustainable way. One of the biggest reasons that this area has been so successful since the Tourism Studio is the people that are involved. We have a lot of great, motivated, smart people who understand the need to promote tourism in the right way, and it's really all about the people.
When you live in a rural community like we do, from Bandon down to Brookings, and you're strapped for cash, relationships are crucial.
As a community, I think you need to come together and find out what your mission and goals are collectively. Then you can work into smaller groups, knowing that you have the backing of the whole community behind you.
As long as everybody's just super excited about it, and passionate about what they're doing, and they can work together, then anything's possible.
Own what you have, and don't try to be something that you're not. It's gonna be hard, it's gonna take a long time, so roll up your sleeves and just dig in with an open mind.
What draws you to the Oregon coast? Is it the green and blue surf on a brilliant sunny day? Or angry boiling waves during a raging winter storm? Do you prefer quiet coves or powerful breakers churning the sand? How about sand castles? Do you come for the rising tide or the setting sun? To marvel at whales gliding through the sea or flying in the sky? Reasons to travel the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are as far-reaching as your imagination. This is a spectacular part of Oregon that traces the entire coastline along Highway 101, guiding you to the sea and away again, to coastal towns, big and small, lowland marshes, and breathtaking overlooks. It's a long byway stretching from the mouth of the Columbia River to the California border, 363 miles in all, of some of the most unblemished, awe-inspiring seascapes you'll find anywhere. In addition to its designation as a scenic byway, Highway 101 in Oregon also has been selected as an all-American road. That means when you come here, you will experience one of only 31 roads considered to be the best of the best in America.
You know, when people come to the Oregon coast, they're really astonished how beautiful it is, and what separates it from many of the other places in North America that are coastal is how undeveloped it is. And that's because Oregon had a, a very far-sided land use program back in the 1970s. We have all these wonderful state parks along the scenic byway that are perfect places to stop and enjoy nature in a relatively unspoiled way.
From the north, you begin in Astoria, the first permanent European settlement in the Pacific Northwest. It's a genuine maritime community, with ship traffic from around the world seeking harbor up the Columbia. The official State Maritime Museum of Oregon sits here on the river. Beautiful Victorian houses dot the hillside. And standing 600 feet above sea level is the 125-foot Astoria Column. It features a hand-painted spiral frieze that would stretch over 500 feet if unwound. Heading south, you'll find the community of Seaside, a popular vacation spot that offers miles of public beaches, an oceanfront promenade, and a downtown core packed with restaurants, shops, and even a beach-type arcade. Cannon Beach is home to one of Oregon's most photographed natural wonders, Haystack Rock. Get your shots from the beach, or take a short drive up to Ecola State Park and look down on this 235-foot work of art. The picturesque small town is filled with art galleries, shops, and cafes. Ready for more? Ten miles to the south, this is the view from Cape Falcon. You're 700 feet above the Pacific. Here, the Pacific Coast Byway has been carved out of Nea County Mountain and held in place by stone walls built in the 1930s by craftsmen in the Civilian Conservation Corps. Upon descending the mountain, the highway drifts inward around Tillamook Bay to Tillamook, the unofficial dairy capital of Oregon. The verdant valley of dairy farms in this area produces 25 million gallons of milk annually. Much of that is processed into natural cheddar cheese. And near more than 800 miles of navigable waters, Tillamook is a crossroads for North Coast recreation. From here, you owe it to yourself to veer off Highway 101 to explore the Three Cape Scenic Loop. This drive places you right at the beach, beginning with Cape Mears, home to the shortest lighthouse in Oregon. Nine lighthouses stand sentinel along Oregon's coastline. They're monuments to our maritime heritage, towering links to the past, and as much a part of the rugged Oregon coastal landscape as any offshore monolith. The Cape Mears Lighthouse was first illuminated in 1890. Oregon's oldest lighthouse is at Cape Blanco, the westernmost point in the state. It was commissioned in 1870 to aid shipping generated by gold mining and the lumber industry. The 93-foot-high Yaquena Head Lighthouse is the tallest in Oregon. Today, its automated light continues to aid navigation at the entrance to Yaquena Bay. Many of the lighthouses are open to the public. Most happen to be excellent places to view nesting seabirds and offshore sea life. Tide pools, those rocky areas between high and low tides, support unique and diverse plants and animals. Vast amounts of colorful, otherworldly creatures wait to be discovered. But while cautiously, these organisms are tough enough to withstand the pounding surf, but are utterly vulnerable to human activity. Wildlife and sea life abound on the coast.
There are six national wildlife refuges along the Oregon coast. The Pacific Coast Scenic Byway bisects these refuges or, or goes alongside them. It provides you the opportunity to see a wide variety of abundant wildlife, including seabirds, seals and sea lions, deer and elk, and many other wildlife.
Cape Kiwanda lies at the southern end of the Three Cape Scenic Loop, near the town of Pacific City. Here, you'll find a second Haystack Rock on the byway. Hike up the dune to marvel at stunning views of sandstone formations as they turn yellow, gold, or even red in the changing sunlight. If your timing is right, you'll spot one or two of the Dory fleet sprint onto the beach after a day of fishing. How's this for a dinner setting? Restaurants along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway accommodate just about any taste. Many serve an ocean view with every meal. Up and down the coast, you'll find seafood, of course, but don't limit yourself just because you're by the water. The Central Coast begins around Lincoln City, which is one of the larger communities on the byway. It has a reputation for being windy, and was recognized by Kite Lines Magazine as the best place to fly a kite in North America. It was incorporated from several small towns, and as a result, offers a sandy beach that is seven and a half miles long. A number of small state parks lie nestled along the ocean between Lincoln City and Newport. Stop, get out of your car, and take in the commanding views that are there, right next to your all-American road. Depot Bay boasts the world's smallest navigable harbor, six square acres in all. A seawall runs the length of the downtown, so everywhere you go, you're rewarded with a dramatic view of the Pacific. It's considered Oregon's whale-watching capital, with thousands making their way past Oregon each fall and spring. Fishing and whale-watching excursions regularly set sail from this little harbor. Leaving Depot Bay, you'll soon find yourself at Cape Fowlweather, a basalt outcropping that looms 500 feet above the water. It was here, in 1778, British Captain James Cook first sighted the mainland of North America on the Pacific coast. A fierce storm that almost put an end to his expedition burned this rugged stretch of coastline.
Thank you. Looks like we're good. So it is 2:30, and Curry County Budget Committee is back from our recess. We are currently on juvenile, page 58.
Wasn't much change there, except for the...
No, I'm actually just gonna recommend that we...
Thank you.
Or I make a motion that we approve this budget as written.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I did aye.
Thank you, sir. This takes us to Emergency Services, which is on pages 61 and 62. And I would make a motion that we approve this budget as written.
I'll second that.
Motion seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is Solid Waste. I recommend that we accept this. I make a motion that we approve the budget as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carries. Next item is Code Enforcement, page 66.
Just a reminder that that position goes full, is budgeted to go full-time.
But not additional, right? Not a second?
It's, the position is not additional to the general fund in this department. It was a .5, it was just in non-departmental. And then the additional .5, the additional 2.5, or .25 places are .25 in planning and .25 in building.
So I move that we accept this as written.
I'll second that.
Motion seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Veteran Services is next. You can see the numbers on page 68. I move that we accept as written.
I'll second that.
Motion seconded. All in, excuse me, any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Now, what comes up in my book next is Commissioners.
Well, actually, the other requirements, which I suggest we hold till the end also with the non-departmental.
Agreed. Putting asterisk on that.
Yeah, page 73, 74.
So, yeah, that, 73. 74 is just the totals of the general fund, all of them, all the departments. Commissioners is, is, there's nothing there to approve. It's been moved to another fund, so this particular one is...
It has moved to Administrative Services.
Just showing history.
Okay, so we don't really have to take any action on that, correct?
No.
All right, put NA on that. Next is the Roads Department. Glad to see we made that plural instead of Road Department. I move that we adopt this budget as written.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And also at the bottom is the Bike and Footpath, which is on the bottom of page...
82.
82. So there's kind of a separate department within the Roads Fund. It's to, they get the field tax and maintain bike lanes and such. Most of the spending is the Road Department does the repairs and then they bill that department for that work.
I move that we approve this as written.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Call for the question?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have roadside improvement.
Roadside Improvement is basically the transfer to where the new fund is. So this is just a carryover balance and then transfer to where the new fund is.
Court mediation, page 87.
You still need to approve that transfer.
From the road.
Got it. So, um...
roadside improvement.
Roadside Improvement, page 85. Move that we move this to Reserve Fund 3.10, is that correct?
No, just to prove the budget as, as it is bringing over...
Transferring.
It's just a transfer budget, the budget as it is.
Okay. I will amend my motion to move that we accept this budget as prepared.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Court mediation, I move that we accept it as written.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's pretty bad when I have to make myself slow down.
You're doing fine.
Bike and Footpath.
So this is one of the reduction of how many funds we have in the county. So this is the transfer budget to transfer to its new place there in the Roads Fund, the 115 Fund.
I move that we approve the budget as prepared.
I'll second that.
All, any discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Next is County Clerks' Records Restricted Fund. And I move that we approve this budget as proposed.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Next is Cornerstone Preservation. It's on page 93. I move that we adopt the proposed budget as written.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
State Court Security Fund, page 95. I move that we adopt the proposed budget as written.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you want to say?
Law Library Fund, page 97. I move that we approve the proposed budget as prepared.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is the Economic Development Fund, page 99, 100. Just one second to look at the notes. I move that we approve the proposed budget as written.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
At the bottom of page 100 is another department that was a, was a separate fund once again. It's the Bridge Light Maintenance Fund.
I move that we approve the proposed budget for the Bridge Light Maintenance Fund.
I'll second that.
Been seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Court, you're smiling. All right, next we have County Sheriff Restricted Revenue Fund, with the numbers actually beginning on page 103. We made a change to this on May 14th.
And to remind you, that was adding the $50,000 transfer in from the general fund and adding 50,000 to line 24. This will actually have another line because there's no revenue on this page for the transfer in from the general fund, so we'll have to add that line added.
I move that we approve the proposed budget as prepared and including our May 14th change.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Rough, rough.
Then we have Marine Patrol.
Search and Rescue.
Hold on a second. What am I? Slow down.
105 is next. 104 and 5, yeah.
About two curried away. Give me a second here to catch up. All right, page 104 through 105, Sheriff's Reserve, Search and Rescue. I move that we approve this proposed budget as written.
I'll second that.
This one had the May 13th payroll change in it. And so it changed not only the payroll but the line item nine, the transfer from the Title III.
I will amend my motion to include the May 13th change.
I'll second the amended motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have Sheriff Marine Patrol on page 106, 107. I move that we approve the proposed budget to include the May 14th change.
That was the added $5,000.
Yes.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then we have Sheriff Forest Patrol. I move that we approve the proposed budget as prepared.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we have Sheriff Inmate Services, which is on page 109. I move that we approve the proposed budget as submitted.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we move on to Sheriff Parole and Probation. Here's where I need a second. On this particular budget, on line item 17, previous years were zero. This year is a $5,000 increase. I'm recommending we not do the $5,000 increase because there hasn't been any new additions in staffing to the parole and probation department. There has been in other divisions.
I'd like to make a comment on that.
Yes, ma'am.
This is revenue, is restricted revenue. It doesn't affect the general fund revenues in any way. And so it doesn't really, if they have the revenue, they can budget.
Thank you for that clarification. So there's no general fund contribution and they're just zeroing out what they're receiving in terms of grants and revenue. I will amend and say that I move to, that we approve the proposed budget for the Sheriff Parole and Probation to include the changes we adopted on May 13th.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Brookings Airport.
So the airport and the airport grants are, the airport's sold, so those are basically closed, so there's no action on those.
So I can just put NA, NA?
I just put a big X there.
Okay. And we have Mr. Huddle's favorite task, which is the Port Orford Landfill Trust. And I would move that we accept, I'm sorry, on page 117, I move that we accept a proposed budget as prepared.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have the Towers Operation and Maintenance Fund, which begins on page 119 and goes through 120. I need a moment to look at my notes. I move that we accept the proposed budget as written.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes. Next, we have the Towers Capital Replacement and Improvement Fund, and that is on page 121. And I move that we adopt a proposed budget as written.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
County Parks, page 123. Need a moment to look at my notes. I move that we accept this proposed budget as written.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Sorry.
I have some discussion on this. Repair and maintenance on the buildings has gone from three to eight, but that was, if I remember, that in his presentation, that was that new roof that they put on one of the restrooms there?
Lobster Creek, Creek, I think.
And Lobster Creek is, I think he budgeted for some repairs in Lobster Creek.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
And I think an important note to make is I don't believe there's any general fund contribution.
There is a general fund, but it was to cover the, the 10% of the Director of Operations' payroll, otherwise it's self-supporting.
And that's the $12,345 that we can find on line 12 on page 123?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Did we?
We had a motion in the second.
It was discussion, yes, so just call for the question.
Call for the question?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have the Victims Assistance Fund on page 126.
General Funds Account, this is another one that we moved to Grant 251. So this is the transfer budget to transfer the carryover balance to the new grant fund.
I move that we approve the proposed budget as written.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is VA Boca Basic.
The Boca Basic Grant is also moving, moving to the federal grant, Fund 250. There's no carryover because this is a claim grant, so the revenues at the end of the year minus expenditures should be zero.
So do we have to take any action on this?
There's no action on this one.
Okay, thank you.
Just showing maybe the history.
Next, we have our Child Advocacy, which is our CAMI grant. That is on page 129 and...
130. This is the one handed out from this morning correcting the way this grant, page appeared. In the first proposed budget, there was an insert and it inserted some lines, so it looked like that $8,000 restricted fund balance was in that salary regular. So it was all off, so this is, what happens with this grant is it's not a claim grant. It is a grant that comes in even quarterly payments, so at the end of the year, I do expect to have a carryover balance that has to be returned to the state since this, we're, next week, we're doing an agreement to transfer the Wally's house to the new nonprofit. So once they, the state gets the carryover balance, they will give that money over to Wally's house.
Okay. Do we need to take action on this?
We do need to take action to approve this one.
I would move that we approve the proposed budget as written.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have the Crisis Assessment Assistant.
That was the restricted funds that came in from Curry Health Foundation. I'm not sure when, several years, five years ago or something like that. It has very little money. Jackie promised me she would spend it by the end of the year so it wouldn't carry over. And then the Boca one-time grant ends June 30th. It will, it's a claim grant. It will not have a carryover balance of any kind.
So no action is required on the year?
No action or, this just shows the history.
Thank you. That moves us into events center administration, which is on page 132, 133.
And 134.
135 is just the fair, so 1, 132, 133, 134. Give me a second to look at my notes. I move that we approve the proposed budget as written.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
County fair is on page 135. And continues on to 136. And this is not, there's no general fund contribution there, is that correct?
No, there, there was the one in the events center to cover the liability or the building insurance, property insurance, but the, this is both actually the fair and the events center operations with a contract with Fair Board, and they set this budget.
Okay. I move that we approve the proposed budget as written for the county fair.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Community development, building.
And for some reason, this is plan, oh, no, sorry. This page 139 is the last year of history from the move for the planning department to the general fund, so that's basically history. And then building starts on page 140.
One second on the line. Just as a comment, I want to say across the board, I'm really not pleased about the increases in general liability insurance to the county. That's a pretty significant hit this year.
It was basically kind of a combination of last year and this year.
Based on?
It's almost a doubling in some areas.
Yes.
And I noticed on the sheriff's budget, they really got hit hard.
Yeah. Hopefully that insurance, it was.
I know.
I think it evens out after this budget, so we're also budgeting for it differently. The prior, we would just budget basically what they had before. And, but when it was paid, it was spread by their budget balance. And so this year, what I did was I took their budget as they were proposed, and I spread the estimated, because we still don't have the true cost of our liability and property insurance yet, but I, I spread it according to budgets, the way it'll be costed once the bill comes in. So it's, it looks like it's a lot different in some places, but that's because of the difference of the way it was applied to budgets.
Okay. Thank you. After reviewing that, I'm looking at my notes, I had nothing down for a change, so I'm going to move that we accept the proposed budget as written.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public health and environmental services. Rich, did you have some feedback you wanted to give on this one?
Yeah, I just had a question on page 144, line 18. Are these passover funds or restricted funds? It went from 400,000 to 575. Could you explain that?
I guess those are pass-through funds and would, what Ben explained was he's basing that based on these budgets, based on what he knows right now. They haven't completed the state budget, so they don't know exactly what this is going to be. So if you notice that every single one of these revenues has a line item that's the exact same amount, so it's the pass-through 575 on line two is the same as the professional services that are passed through on line 18.
Just wondering, that was, just seemed like a lot, so.
If, if you look at the history on, on both those lines, it's, it's because there was a change of the state of the way that they contracted these services, and it went from kind of going directly to CCH to being passed through the county. So the first preceding year looks a lot lower because they didn't start that program until January of 2018, which is halfway through the year of the 1718 year. And so we, we have a budget for the 1819 year based on 100% of that going on, and this is the next year of that.
Okay.
So we have two different items here relative to public health. The first one is going to be on page 143, and that is public health, environmental. And so I am moving that we accept the proposed budget as written.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Next, we have public health and human services, which can be found on page 144. I move that we accept a proposed budget as written.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, it looks like we're moving on to admin commissioners. I move that we reduce pay for all commissioners to $5 a year. Just making sure we're all.
You might get some support on that.
Everybody's awake.
All right. Being serious.
I think that we did have a little bit of a change here. So the travel budget, I think that they wanted it to total to 15,000. 15? Instead of, I gotta look it up again, sorry. It's at 19,5 right now. Did you want me to reduce, because it had, we added 15,000 this year, but in the original budget was 4,500, so it's now sitting in this year, the 2019, 20 budget is sitting at 19,5. Do you, and we did have some discussion of moving that back down to a total of 15,000 instead of 19,5. And I don't know if that's what you want me to do or just leave it here and just not.
That's what we discussed earlier, is putting it 15.
That's still 2,000 more than what it was three years ago. So I think 15 will cover. I think I made that point. I may not have made it clear enough, but.
And we're arriving at that number by adding the three line items? Is that correct?
Well, it's line item 31, line items.
31.
37, 38, 39, and on the next page, 1 and 2. So it's 31, 37, 38, 39, and then 1 and 2. That should be 19,5.
Yes, ma'am. Just because it's there doesn't mean you need to spend it, so I'm just going to move that we accept the proposed budget as written.
Why not reduce line, say, 37 by $4,500? Just to, to get it in line with what we've got? Since it doesn't matter whether we're, you know, within the category, that way we can get it down a little more.
So which line did you want to bring down?
Well, I'm looking at the line 37. Bring that, bring that down by $4,500.
Could we negotiate on that?
We're going to be right back where we were a year ago. It looks like to me, you, you could, Mr. Bass, you go 19,000 when you added up the four lines?
19, 19,5, yeah. Why don't, I, I agree. Why don't we just leave it, leave it at the 19,5 and we'll just be.
You don't have to spend it, I think is sort of my point, but I'd like to see the commissioners have a little bit more flexibility in the category to move things around, just like the other departments do.
Thank you.
That is like so much of your budget. You don't have anything outside of that, really, except for your copier and, and your cell phones, which you can't do anything about, so.
I'll second your motion.
Did I make a motion yet?
You did.
I did make a, it's going so fast, I'm having a hard time keeping up. And so we have a second to the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And then we have VOC office. And I move that we approve the proposed budget as written.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Now we're on to administration, finance, which is on page 154. And I move that we approve the proposed budget as written.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
County council on page 156. I move that we approve the proposed budget as written.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Next is payroll and personnel. That's on page 158. I move that we approve the proposed budget as written.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's info tech, IT. Page 159.
Let's see, page 159. I'm making sure I'm on the right.
I think the next page numbers are wrong.
So I'm on page 159, and that's information technology.
Which is IT department?
And, okay, I think I got a little ahead of myself on signing these things off, but Just a note on this, I really do think this is quite an expense for an outside entity to approve, or excuse me, to provide these services. I think the county would be better served with its own internal information technology, where you have people on call and available to respond after hours, and having the county be their only priority. And I think it could be funded with material and service costs along with personnel under the amount that we're currently spending.
I'll second that.
There's nothing we can do now, because you don't just replace an IT provider. That takes time to go through those machinations. So I've made my statement. I move that we accept the proposed budget as written.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Could we spend just a moment on that? Director Schmelzer, do you want to comment on that? I've not had any discussions with you, but I think just to give us some direction on where we might be headed in the next few months would be very helpful to me and the public, I think.
Sure. I have had conversations, well, I sat down with the IT providers, and I wanted to know why the bill was so high. And they went through and they showed that a lot of it was just basically laziness on our part. Instead of just doing something ourselves, we would always call IT, so then we'd get billed for that. So we worked with the departments and saying, you know, if it's something you can be doing in-house, do it in-house. Let's try and save the money, and that did help reduce those costs a little bit. They did go through and gave us a overall users study to show who was asking the questions, what type of questions were they? Is it stuff they could be handling in-house, or were they true IT needs? So that kind of helped us understand pretty much what the true need is, I guess. They also went through and they looked at all of our computers for us, and we talked about this the other day, but they went through and they inventoried all the computers and looked at the life that was left on them, and helped us develop a plan for replacement of when we could actually see those getting replaced and make sure that we budgeted accordingly.
Quick follow-up, Mr. Chair.
Sir?
Have we actually spent, you know, invested a substantial amount in additional equipment in the last couple of years that you're aware of? I'm not.
We have.
Okay. Rough, rough amount?
Louise, would you know?
I don't know, because what we're trying to do is trying to get computer equipment to be purchased through the IT department rather than every department deciding whether or not they need a new computer. Some of them are deciding, no, I don't need a new computer, and their computer is 15 years old. But they do need a computer, but they're not budgeting for it, and they're not doing it. So we're trying to move those decisions into this department, so number one, we know what our cost for replacing computer equipment is, and number two, that we better have a better handle of what's being purchased and for how much.
Right. I agree. I mean, you'd have people purchasing one type of computer when we could be getting a better rate at another one. So basically, the strategy right now is, you know, I've only been here since February, but CCE, CECT and IT and I did agree to just work on these things to try and see where we can be saving money before we pull the plug and say, oh, that's it, we need a whole new IT department. Because there is stuff we could be doing to save money right now.
Just one small question. If the IT, KUS Curry is going to be providing these computers, are the department budgets reduced in those areas where they would have said they were going to buy computers with, with the money? Just curious.
If they are, if, once we get the program going, then they will not be budgeting in, within their department's purpose.
Yeah, I was just wondering if they had budgeted this year for computers?
Well, even if they budgeted this year, this budget for replacing computer equipment is about a quarter of what we need to replace, so.
Okay.
And, and I also like to, to make the comment is, IT, I am sure, is going to be a large part of your strategic plan.
Yeah.
So, you know, this is a budget. We haven't got a strategic plan in place yet, but once we do, then this budget will follow the strategic plan to be where we want to be.
Thanks for allowing that time, Mr. Chair. That helps.
Got a question. Are we into page 160 when we're looking at costs? Am I jumping ahead?
No, you, you're on target.
Because I see that the computers are 46, 920, and then the software is 68, 810. Am I? But I'm wondering, the other day, Ken mentioned that they went to the Google for a lot less, and I'm wondering, are we exploring that?
That's the basis for allowing this conversation now, just to get a heads up, just even preliminarily. So yes, you're on the right track. Thank you.
Yeah, because it's, it sounds like that'd be our considerable savings.
We will be exploring that, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So I understand from talking to some of the elected officials in the department. So I understand from talking to some of the elected officials in the department is that also what's happening is the, uh, servers are not in the greatest of condition and are aging as well. And so you have a huge infrastructure problem from an IT perspective, and that from a security perspective is really scary, because they stopped making patches for some of the older systems, which means that you don't have the highest and best security protocols. Again, I would highly recommend that you really consider hiring your own staff. Um, your rate in terms of reimbursement, I'm quite certain the people from KUSCURI Electric that are providing that service and have been very helpful to the county, they're having to charge you their actual cost, which is probably higher than what you would pay with your own personnel. Those funds then that are made up between the cost of personnel can help replace some of this equipment. But I, I do believe that you guys have a serious problem that is going to create some real tragedies if it's not addressed in the next two years. Yes?
I, I agree, and outsourcing IT has never proven to be a profitable situation for anyone, I don't believe, but, uh, I think this is something that we're going to have to move forward with quickly. And I agree that if we are going to change servers and upgrade all of that, it would certainly be nice to have that new IT department in place, so that when it is set up, they know where all the bells and whistles and switches are.
Yes, sir.
I, I just want to remind the public, though, that KUSCURI came to our rescue two years ago, had they not?
I'm, I'm not making any complaint about it.
And, and I think you, you actually just kind of indirectly referenced that a moment ago. So I want to be fair to them, and I think we are, I, but there's gotta be ways to save money on this, and, but I want to be fair to them, and how much new equipment and the issues that you're identifying that we're aware of, are trying to be better aware of. Very helpful, uh, thank you again.
And the reason I bring these up, not to belabor the point, is because this is year one of four. And we need to get somewhere in the four-year period. And so by planting these seeds now, hopefully as we progress over this four-year cycle that I'm involved with the Budget Committee, we can make some advancements in how we handle business. Having said that, I move that we approve, I don't recall if I made it, so I'm just gonna make it again. I move that we approve the proposed budget as written.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have, uh, Central County Occupancy.
This is actually all of the county occupancy, we don't have north and south and central anymore, we just have central. It serves all of our buildings in the county, although there's no north county building anymore.
Got it. Just checking my notes. I move that we approve the proposed budget as written.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So North County is closed, I'm gonna put an NA, no action. Louise, it says on here, Internal Services, is that a, in this process?
Yeah, so the, the next few are all part of what's called the Internal Services Fund. It's a combination fund, once again, that combined three funds into one. So they were all each a fund, and now they're all three under one.
So that's on page one sixty-six, one sixty-seven, is that correct?
Yes.
And, that's vehicle replacement. And one sixty-seven is general, so the building repair...
Building repairs.
It's on page one sixty-six. Move that we accept and approve the proposed budget as written.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the Internal Service General Vehicle Service, which is on one sixty-seven. I move that we approve the proposed budget as written.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Then we have on page one sixty-eight, the Vehicle Replacement Fund. I move that we approve the proposed budget as written.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And that was the vehicle replacement, and then, so that transferred over.
Yeah, so this, um, page, uh, one seventy is one of the funds that transferred from Fund One, Two Point, Two Two to Point, Two Point, Two One, that's why they're right against each other.
Okay.
But this is the budget to transfer the, um, the beginning fund balance to the new place.
So...
Just kind of a transfer budget.
I move that we approve the proposed budget on page one seventy.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Road Capital Improvement, which is on page one seventy-two.
And this is also, um, uh, one of the reorganization of the funds. So it moved to what we're calling the Reserve Funds, which there were several that were individual, and now they're all one. So this is the transfer budget to move it to Fund Three Ten.
I move that we approve the proposed budget and transfer.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Looks like the next two are Closed County Lands and Vehicle TV.
Yeah, so they're just histories of those two funds.
No action is required. Next, we have Peg Access, which is on page one seventy-eight. I move that we approve the proposed budget as written.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Building Repair and Construction Projects Fund.
And this was another one that, um, we moved to, uh, the Fund Two Twenty-One we just talked about a little bit ago, and this is the transfer, the carryover balance to the new placement.
Thank you. I move that we approve the proposed budget and transfer as written.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Next, we have Federal Grants.
So, um, this is, uh, page one eighty-three through like page one eighty-eight. It's all of the, uh, federal grants. Voca Basic was moved into here, so the history is in a different place. And I think what we should do is approve the federal grant fund instead of each individual grant.
Okay, let's take a few moments, if we all would please, and just page through one eighty-three, one eighty-four, one eighty-five, one eighty-six, one eighty-seven, one eighty-eight. Yes, and I'll give everybody a moment to do that.
And just a comment, I don't think there's a whole lot we can do about the grants, so...
Agreed. Still want to make sure we're giving them due time. I move that we approve the proposed federal grant budgets on pages one eighty-three through one eighty-eight as written.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have State, Local, and Restricted.
Do anything with that either.
It's on page one ninety, and it looks like that goes through page one ninety-four. I move that we accept the proposed budget as written.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
One ninety-six, and this is the general self-insure, self, I like self-insurance, self-insurance. Uh, I move that we...
This is the history and transfer to the new Fund Three Ten, so it's, it's the transfer budget.
I move that we approve, uh, the proposed budget and transfer as written.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have Road Fund Equipment Self-Insurance Fund, and that one is moving as well. So I will move that we approve the proposed budget and transfer as written.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the Bridge Lighting Maintenance Fund.
And this is, there, uh, there really, there is no transfer, cause it didn't have a balance, and so this is now being budgeted under, um, Economic Development Fund One Twenty-Seven. There's no, there's only history showing here, so there's no action.
Thank you.
Good job.
So we should listen to the reserve fund. Start seeing the financial information on two oh-three. And I would move that we approve the proposed budget as written.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the PERS Reserve. It's on that same page, two oh-three, and I move that we approve the proposed budget as written.
I'll second that.
It's been seconded, sorry, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Just one point, I know we increased the salaries. Did the PERS increase appropriately?
This is, this is a reserve fund that was set up many years ago. It's being used to pay, uh, right now it's being used to pay for, um, when people retire and PERS decides that they worked in your entity thirty years ago and you owe PERS for that.
Oh, gotcha.
That's where we paid out of, this gets no revenue. And once this reserve goes, finishes, it'll be gone. So it's, um, it's just a reserve fund, um, to pay those kind of costs that come in unexpectedly from PERS.
So does that happen very often?
It happens less in the county than it does in a school, because the school what happens is, substitute teachers retire, and they worked in four different districts and none of them knew that they were PERS-covered, or eligible to be PERS-covered, so...
Okay.
It helps, it doesn't happen a lot in counties, but it does a lot in schools, so...
Interesting, okay, thank you.
That's two hundred and fifty-one thousand, that's in reserve?
Two hundred and twenty.
Two twenty?
Yeah, the, um, unemployment self, the unemployment self-insurance is two fifty-one. And the PERS reserve is two twenty.
So...
It's two separate departments.
Is that a high reserve for that, if we don't have a lot of history of those PERS claims? Or is that...
The, well, it has no other revenue, so if you start taking money out of there, it doesn't get replaced, so...
I'd like to see that at about a half million before we start taking money out of that. It's more of an RDF, a rainy day fund.
Okay.
You know, it's a little thing that sits over there, and we don't have to add to it, but at the same time, if it builds up and we do add some to it, then...
The one that is, uh, this one that does get revenue up here, the unemployment, um, self-insurance, this is one is, one I would say is kind of getting to the point that you might, um, consider transferring out. We did two years ago, transferred out a hundred and twenty-seven, um, which left the balance at one eighty. So now we're at two fifty-one, and you're kind of getting up there again where you might take some money out of it, but I might wait a year or so to do that.
I'd like to wait a little bit. It's good to have a little bit of, some pockets.
And that is, and we are self-insured for unemployment, so, um, if we have any unemployment claims, they will be paid out of this fund.
If it's on a large number, pretty important fund.
Well, yeah, I mean, if you start laying people off. Or even if you don't, I mean, even if they leave, go to someplace else and get laid off from there, they can go back to you, and you're paying unemployment on them.
What?
The rules for unemployment have changed a lot.
Oh, boy.
They're terrible. Yeah, you're on the hook.
If they go and the next person hires them and then they lay them off, they can come back to you.
There's a, there's a time limit on that, but certainly...
One year, I think it is.
It's...
Hmm, that doesn't sound fair.
I've had it happen.
So, um, I don't recall if I did or not, cause after a while you just forget, so...
I did, I did check off the PERS reserve, I think you guys voted on it? Did you?
JJ?
Not yet.
We didn't.
Health insurance was approved unanimously, as was, um, equipment. Self-insurance also. So we did not do PERS yet?
No, you, you made a motion, I seconded, and then I asked the question.
Okay, thank you for confusing me.
No, it was discussion.
I, I can still smile at three-thirty in the afternoon, that's really important to me. So, um, it's been moved, seconded, discussed. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have Reserves, Roadside Improvement.
This one is extremely restricted, can only be spent on Titus Lane. And right now, uh, there is no actual expenditure, um, being, uh, budgeted for. It is in a reserve for future expenditure, which means it will not be appropriated.
I move that we approve the proposed budget as written.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And next, we have, uh, Road Capital Improvement. We did ask for a change on May thirteenth.
And there's going to be, um, uh, changes here, um, from the, from this morning. Um, you know, I mean, the sheriff changes, so the criminal, all of the sheriff's departments will change. So I don't know what that number is right now, so until I, um, calculate all the changes from this morning and get that all together with all of the changes, I don't know what the impact here will be. It's not gonna be very much, but it will have an impact.
I would recommend to the committee, um, that we hold off on that one, just like we did to, uh, non-departmental and other requirements, cause I think that's sort of an end game, where are we at? Everyone concur?
Yes.
A little astounded by that. And we have, uh, Reserves, Road, let's see, Reserves, General Equipment Self-Insurance.
So these are where they were moved to, so this is the budget to do those two funds, the road equipment and general equipment.
So we're gonna deal with the general equipment self-insurance first. Uh, I, I move that we approve the proposed budget as written.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have Road Equipment Self-Insurance, and I move that we approve the proposed budget as written.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have PR, PERS Expense Reserve Fund.
This is the one that was moved to up above, Three Ten, had its own Fund Three Eleven, so it was combined with the other reserve funds, so this is the transfer budget.
Do we need to take any action on that?
Yeah, you have to, but, cause I do have to transfer the beginning fund balance to the new placement.
I move that we approve this proposed budget and transfer as written.
I'll second that.
It's been seconded, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is the County Schools Fund. It's on page two oh-nine. I move that we approve the proposed budget as written.
I'll second that.
It's moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have Title III Reserve. First, we have the prior to two thousand and eight. Move that we approve the proposed budget as written. Move that we approve the proposed budget as written.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Let me just make one point. This Title III, since I've done a little bit of research, it carries over. Is that correct, Louise?
Yes, the, after this year, there's no foreseeable new revenues. This one doesn't have any new revenues because it's everything that we received before 2008. The next two will, if, if they continue SRS, will have future revenues. But as of this year, it's, this is the last year we're going to have revenues in it, and it'll just be carryover balances from there.
Okay, but it's still very restricted in the way we can spend it.
This one is the one that's the least restricted. And then, if we go to the next page, this one is on page 212. This one is the one that is restricted to projects that were written or people applied for and were approved by the board, so there's, this, this one has a bunch of projects in it. And this is also the, when we get the money from the federal, from the federal government, when we get the SRS funds, we get, this is where the Bureau of Land Management money comes in. And this last one is where the Forest Service money comes in. So, the bulk of these two have high restrictions on them. And they are only for search and rescue, and those funds can only be spent during an active search.
Okay.
So, you can't buy equipment ahead of time. You can't train ahead of time. You can only buy equipment if it's needed while you're actively searching.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that for everybody.
So, these three funds are kind of together. They're just different pieces of the Title III funds.
Is that only on forest service land or BLM land?
Yeah, the, the active searches have to be on forest service land.
No.
No, they have to be on, they have, they only can only fund search and rescue. Search and rescue, we have a fund for search and rescue. And I can bring over Title III money to supplement that, but only in percentage of, the percent of searches that were done on federal land.
Reason I ask is that recent drowning that they had on the river. I guess that started out as a search and rescue, is that...
I don't have access to the, what is currently going on in search and rescue. I get a report. I actually have gotten two reports this year updating me of where we are, and that was to help me try to figure out where I'm going to get the revenue to budget. So, I think that usually we have about, anywhere from 35 to 55 percent is on federal land. And I could, I could, if I look at the search and rescue budget and I come down to the end of the year and say I spent $100,000, I can take $55,000 out of Title III and bring that revenue into search and rescue. But that's all. So, right now, what we're budgeting is a conservative 25 percent will come from Title III and 75 percent from the general fund. But if it ends up that we have 55 percent of the searches on federal land, I will just bring in less from the general fund and bring in more from Title III. And that's the way this, this budget is, has been built.
So, is there a lot of oversight on that every time you transfer? I mean, do we have eyes looking on us, or? Just curious.
You know, I don't know. I don't do, I don't do any reports. But I guess the eyes would be anybody who finds that it's objectionable that I use those Title III funds can... But I, I think that we both...
Auditors will, yes.
Well, the auditors look at it, of course.
Okay.
And they may even test it to make sure that it's valid.
And they might test it, too. So, I have all the backup to every time I do the transfer. I have all of the backup sheets of what, where all the expenditures are and why I moved it. So, I do have really good backup for every time I do Title III spending.
Okay.
Commissioner Boyce?
Nationally, they keep talking about making it more flexible on where these funds can be used. We're going to have a workshop on this on the 20th, so we might want to hold the discussion until then. I think we'll all learn a lot on that, and that's primarily from CUS Forest Protective, which is the other portion of the requirements, restrictive bit for firefighting, et cetera, so, thank you.
I'll be brief. I have that, the last audit from, of those funds. I have it copied where they cite different sheriff's offices and the use of funds. The bottom conclusion was they have no teeth in it because they cited all these offenses by the different counties and the way you use the funds. And bottom line is their conclusion. Yeah, office about it, well, I mean, they had no, they had no teeth, and that's... But I'd be happy to give it to you just to read. It's, it's pretty long. I'm not sure you want it, but it's there.
Yeah, they, they haven't asked for like even a desk audit or anything from the county. But if they did, that's basically what they would do. They would just write a report saying, hey, you really shouldn't be doing that.
Exactly, and that's what the report concluded that they... Anyway, I have it in case someone wants to read it.
Ethically, I wouldn't recommend that.
I think the test is, do you want headlines in the paper of how you spent Title III funds? And if, if you don't mind saying that I spent it on this and you can back up why you did it, then there's no reason...
I did want to make a note about the Title III funds that are prior to 2008. There's, there's not a ton of money in there. And I noticed that they're all transferring search and rescue, but those old Title III funds used to be good funds. The Juvenile Department used them and did a lot of projects with the Forest Service.
Well, it says...
Sad to see that changed the rules on that.
It does say transfer to search and rescue, but if I needed that for Marine or someplace else, it's available for that. It doesn't have, this one does not have to transfer to search and rescue. I could even use it for towers, any of the ones that... I mean, we have a huge list of projects that were after 2008, and basically, all those projects qualify under prior to 2008 also. It was when the restrictions were a lot looser to what you could spend the money on, so...
Given that information, should we not be looking at trying to put this $51,000 into play this year then and make sure that they get spent?
It doesn't really matter because, I mean, what I'm doing is, is I'm spending this money here, this 2008 to 2011 money with all the projects. So, as, as I'm using, I, as, if I have a project that back in 2009, 10, was written for $50,000, $60,000, and I've used it all along until now, and now I've run out, I have that money that I can use. So, it, it's kind of, it's, when I look at these funds, I look at all three of them together and what I can spend the money on. So, I have released, there, there were some things that were written for in the 2008 through 2011 projects that were released. There's interest that comes in on this money. So, that interest money, the release funds, the prior to 2008 funds, those are available to continue projects as long as I can. So, it's not individually spent. It's spent as a big block, just in certain ways because of the different restrictions on the three funds.
I will call for a question on this. We have moved it, and there was a second. We have discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have Title III, let me put the glasses on, 2008 DUI BLM. I move that we approve the proposed budget as written.
I'll second that.
Moved, seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And next, we have Title III USDA Forest Service. And that is going to be on page 213. I move that we approve the proposed budget as written.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 I believe we have three items left. Those are, we're not going to do today. Those are the non-departmental, the other requirements. And...
The Road Fund Improvement.
The Reserves, Road Capital Improvement. So, we will take those up tomorrow. How do we want to schedule tomorrow? Mr. Jesuit, when you sent out the public notice regarding our hearing time tomorrow, what was the schedule?
That's a move, pardon, 24 hours, so we start at 10, it's too late.
Well, I, and I already...
No, no, that's why I'm asking what was sent out. What would, 10 o'clock. So, we need to convene at 10 tomorrow. You may not be ready, which is why I'm asking. We can, we can convene and say we're coming back at 1 o'clock.
Right.
That's all we got to do, but I'm asking you, what time do you need?
And it's really hard to say how much time I need. I think that I can be done in time to give you the information you need by 1 o'clock tomorrow.
Okay.
And it might be a little bit of a close call, but I think I can get it done.
Well, how about if we push it to 1:30?
I don't think that matters.
Okay.
I, I'm just thinking that, I, I, I'm trying to think of what form I'm going to give it to you in. And I don't know if, once I... I mean, what I have to do is I have to put it all in, and so I know what the final number is. And if I put it in and tell you what the final number is, you know what all the changes are, do you have to see it in writing of all the changes? Or can I just say, final number is this, you need to move to approve this dollar amount? I mean, I can give you a little report of what changed in other requirements, what changed in, in, in the carryover balance revenues and what changed in Road Fund Improvement. But you don't want the whole...
Well, now I have to ask a question, which is, I, I want to make sure we're doing whatever legally required. And so, if, if, if what you're talking about is acceptable and meets the legal requirements, then that is satisfactory.
So, what I'll do is I'll do a little report saying that...
And which is the process you're talking about?
Just approving the budget.
Okay.
So, they, once they've, they've told me, they've approved everything with the changes that they told me to make in it. So, they don't need to go back through another one of these that shows all the changes. I just need to tell them the total dollar effects of those changes.
Right, so in other words, we come back tomorrow at 10, we adjourn till, recess till 1. You present the summary of the changes they've told you to make and what the total dollar is, and they move to approve a total dollar budget and a tax rate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, it's kind of a courtesy that I will tell you what changed on the general fund, those two ones that we haven't approved yet, and what changed on the Road Capital Improvement Fund. But the total dollar amount that you need to do is just when I get everything all balanced and ready, I have a one number for you to approve.
So, my next question would be, we have three items we did not do today, which we really can't do today. You're in a better position to provide us that information. Non-departmental, other requirements, and road. Do we do that at 1 o'clock, or do we do that at 10 a.m.?
We'll do it at 1 o'clock because those are numbers I won't have until...
That's why I'm verifying.
Yeah, so, what, the first thing we'll do is we'll, I'll, I'll kind of say, these are the effects of changes on those three departments. And so, that makes the total amount this much. And so, you could approve those three departments separately if you want to, or you could just approve the whole budget. The reason why we went, we went, go through it like this is just so that we know that we have looked at everything and that you agree with what's in the budget and that you all saw what was in that budget. But really, you don't have to go through these departments one by one. You just have to approve a $1 amount. So, even when we come back tomorrow, you don't have to go back and approve non-departmental and approve that. If you just approve the file number, you have approved all of them.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bash?
I was just running in for travel for everyone else. All we need is a quorum at 10 a.m. to come in and then recess until 1, 2.
I live here, so, okay.
And I'm going to be in Gold Beach tomorrow, so us two can be here at 10 a.m. and I'm going to be here, okay?
Are you going to be here? You had a question about tomorrow.
I might call in at 10. I really am undecided right now, especially if you, you know, it's just going to be a quick one and then...
I don't know if we can get by without you, sir.
Oh, I'm sure you can.
So, four of us.
We'll have four of us.
I'll be here.
Yes.
Do you want to even need to call in at 10, just to let one come up?
It'd really be good if you could be here at 1 o'clock. I think your constituents would like to see you participate in the final process.
I, it'd be very difficult to argue with you, sir, Chair. Thank you.
I'll be here at 1 o'clock. Awesome, thank you. So, I believe we've taken care of our housekeeping for tomorrow. I want to say thank you to everybody. It's been a, it's not been an easy process. There's been a lot of time involved in all of this. And I really appreciate all the support we're getting, and I'm looking forward to concluding our business tomorrow.
I need to, I need 60 seconds.
Yes, sir.
I don't know of anybody in Curry County that has experience with this whole process and you. So, I just want to extend gratitude. This guy here's been shot before. I mean, Mr. Alcorn, and this guy has two Purple Hearts. I mean, I am just, I'm just in awe. And so, there, I only took 30 seconds, but I wanted to say that and just really extend huge gratitude. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And I'd like to thank Ken. If he's not coming next year, I'm not coming.
Ooh.
But you're the chair, and I'm going to have to...
The chair is sitting behind you, if you don't show up.
So, thank you, everyone. I appreciate it. And 10 a.m. for four of us, and the rest of us at 1. Thank you. John, don't forget your law book.